Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and take your seats after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We're going to start the Select Board meeting now, so just please try to keep down side conversations, turn off cell phones. Yes, there's thank you. There is one change to the agenda under the Town Manager's Report. We will be hearing from the Department of Public Works tonight, but we will not be hearing the Solid Waste Report. We'll hear that at a subsequent meeting. We will be responding to some public comments from prior meetings, and we will open to public comments that are not otherwise on our agenda. And seeing that, we'll accept the agenda and move to announcements. I'll turn it over to Libby Gibson, the Town Manager.
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We hope everybody will stay connected with the Town Manager Monthly E-Newsletter. We publish it at the end of every month. It features updates on town projects, services, upcoming decisions, events, and recognitions. And you can subscribe to it and explore other ways to stay connected about stuff going on in town government using the link that is on the Select Board meeting agenda. The town is going to be hosting public informational sessions on PFAS this fall and winter. We will host a series of these informational sessions to share science-based education on PFAS. And there are a number of sessions. The first one will be held on Monday, November 17th, at 5:30 in this room. And information can be found about that and other sessions, again, on the Select Board's meeting agenda. There's a link there. The American Legion is inviting the community to attend its annual Veterans Day ceremony. That will happen on Tuesday, November 11th, at 10:45 at the Veterans Memorial at Federal Street, right next door to the Town Building. And a reception will follow at Legion Hall, 21 Washington Street. The 2026 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Town Meeting will start Monday, May 4th, is currently open for citizen warrant articles submittals through Monday, November 17th, at 4:00 p.m. And that is it for announcements.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any opening Select Board reports or comments?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I'd like to make an opening comment. I'd like to acknowledge Greg Tivnan, Chuck Larson, Andrew Shapiro, David Gray, Mark Willett, and John Haddon, and Chris Lowe, who is the PFAS team, who won an award from the Massachusetts Coalition for Water Resource Stewardship for their work in protecting our sole source aquifer and advancing PFAS management. Terrific work. Felt responsible as the Board of Health Select Board rep on acknowledging that. That's excellent work. And just to acknowledge the public for everyone who turned out to Town Meeting last night. That was a terrific turnout. No matter where you sat on the issue or what way you voted, it's just great to see democracy and work like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Next up, we do have public comments from prior meetings, so I will read those now. From 10:22, Amy Eldridge asked, "Is there a way to look at getting the warrant and these agendas in Spanish and Portuguese?" Town response, "Over the last few years, the town has considered translating major documents, such as the Town Meeting Warrant, and has conducted extensive research into how other municipalities with diverse populations approach language access. Most rely on website translation tools, and translations of materials such as warrants or agendas are rare, primarily due to their complexity and cost. The town already provides multiple tools and services to help residents access information in their preferred language, including..." "The town website includes a built-in translation tool that allows visitors to view pages in multiple languages, including Spanish and Portuguese. Town surveys are provided in multiple languages to encourage participation from all community members. Social media platforms such as Facebook and Instagram include automatic translation features that make posts and updates more accessible. Town offices offer over-the-phone interpretation services for residents who prefer to communicate in another language. The warrant's length, complexity, and formatting make it impractical to translate using automated tools. Producing an accurate translation requires professional translators and continuous updates as amendments are made, making it both costly and logistically challenging to maintain. In 2022, the town translated a special Town Meeting warrant into Spanish and Portuguese as a pilot effort, but received no feedback or requests for assistance." "Effective participation at Town Meeting also depends on real-time interpretation, since discussions and votes evolve throughout the session. To fully support non-English speakers, interpreters would need to be present not only at the meeting, but also at the Select Board Finance Committee, Capital Program Committee, and other boards and commissions meetings leading up to the Town Meeting. If permitted by the state, translating election ballots should require additional legal coordination with the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office and local election officials to ensure compliance with an accuracy of statutory language. While translating the warrant to engage a greater portion of the population is a noble effort, it may not be feasible at this time. The town remains ready and willing to continue exploring this issue in collaboration with non-English-speaking community members to identify the most effective ways to provide support. Residents are encouraged to contact communications@nantucket-ma.gov."
Don, before that...
Yes.
And a couple of years ago, we were talking about this. I took, I copied and pasted a couple warrant articles into Brazilian, into Portuguese, and into Spanish, and gave them to a couple people I know who said they were really good. They said, "Oh, they're not perfect, but they're really good. We get the gist of it." So if people are interested, they can pull it off, copy and paste it, and run it. So it does, and it has gotten a lot better since then. So, anyway.
Thanks, ma'am. Next up, Clifford Williams asked, "I was hoping you could extend the town attorney's opportunity to..." Town Attorney's Opportunity to Review Citizen Warrant Articles? Town response, "At this time, the town is not going to be extending Town Council's review hours." And then Clifford also asked, "I'd love to build some affordable housing. I think I have enough people to do it affordably. Can we engage in a conversation with her? I was hoping to see if I could get information from the governor so I could contact her directly." Town response, "Thank you for your interest in helping to address Nantucket's affordable housing needs. We truly appreciate community members who want to be part of the solution. The Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust welcomes proposals from individuals, organizations, and developers who wish to partner on affordable housing initiatives. All proposals must go through a formal evaluation process to ensure that public funds are used responsibly and that projects align with the trust's housing goals. Here's a brief overview of how the process works. Evaluation: The Affordable Housing Trust reviews all submitted proposals for financial feasibility, long-term affordability, community benefit, and alignment with local and state housing goals. Due diligence: Proposals are also reviewed by the town's bond council and financial advisors to ensure compliance with funding regulations. Approval process: Recommendations from the Affordable Housing Trust are then advanced through the Select Board approval process, ensuring transparency and proper oversight. Examples of proposals: A good project typically includes a well-defined site, clear financials, a development team with housing development experience, and a plan to create or preserve housing that remains affordable in perpetuity. As an example, the Affordable Housing Trust approved a request by Habitat for Humanity for a $4 million grant to build six homeownership units. The application provided detailed plans, a budget, a project team with a history of building affordable housing, and experience working with the state's Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, known as the EOHLC. An incomplete request, by contrast, may lack a feasible budget, fail to meet affordability criteria, or be inconsistent with zoning. For example, in 2024, the Affordable Housing Trust declined a verbal offer to purchase a vacant parcel for $15 million due to the demonstrated lack of due diligence, site plan feasibility of site, or proposed budget for construction. If eligible proposers are interested in developing affordable housing, we encourage the submittal of a project proposal to the Affordable Housing Trust, including the following details: summary of or a tear sheet on the project, total cost of the project to determine the loan-to-value, loan-to-cost ratios, useful life of the project, financials on the borrower, background information for key members of the sponsor, previous experience of borrower with similar projects, pro forma of the project, alternative sources of financing and equity for the project, any and all appraisals done on the property, including values derived as market rate and as affordable, any and all feasibility studies prepared for the project. Governor Healy can be contacted, and that's on the website. So those were the questions from that meeting. And then we will move to public comment for items that are otherwise not on our agenda for discussion this evening. We do limit topics to three minutes, and please identify yourself if you're coming to the mic.
Clifford Williams.
Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a few concerns on the African Meeting House investigation. I know it's been delayed. It's supposed to start on the 1st. It hasn't started. I know Barbara Burgele was supposed to be involved. She's sent several emails until yesterday. I don't believe she's been answered as far as her participation. I know this board said she was able to participate. I just think we're missing some transparency. I never got the updated RFP from last July, where we were supposed to add a couple of different items. So I was just hoping to call for a meeting, as I did last June or July, so we can hopefully straighten out the direction of the meeting and the direction of the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak?
Yeah, hi. I'm Luke Thornwell, again, with the African Meeting House. I'm supporting Cliff. His comments, I just thought it important to say that it's been a little bit of a painful process. I think a lot of us feel, I mean, we were voted in to help, you know, segue in justice and truth and all these things. And it's been painful. A lot of times, I think, members of us that have sat have felt handcuffed, or not heard, or initiatives aren't allowed to be, it's kind of like the system has been very difficult, in my opinion, in allowing humans to sort of like approach a very sensitive town matter about other humans. And I find it very, I've found it difficult. I just wanted to say that. And I also have the understanding that maybe, you know, when we were interviewing the investigators, they shared the thought that it was important to meet with us as a group. And I was under that impression that that was a healthy thing to do. It would sort of, it could even somewhat wrap up our task. And it's my understanding now that that may not be happening. And I think that is not good. And so, thank you.
Okay. I would recommend that you talk to Malcolm, who's the chair of that work group. Anybody else here to speak on items otherwise not on our agenda for discussion this evening? Anybody online? Okay. All right, there is no, oh. Matthew Galvin.
Yes, hi, how are you? I'm here. I have a comment with regard to what I believe may be a noise-abatement provision that might come before the Select Board. My company, I'm the president of the company which owns, which manages Myakomik Golf Course and Sconset Golf Course.
That's on the agenda later, under the noise by law proposal.
Okay. Will there be comment available at that time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, there's no new business. We will move to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. Are there any questions, changes?
So moved. Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No roll call tonight? Next up, we have Citizen Departmental Committee requests and reports. First, request for waiver of sewer connection permit fee for a covenant lot located at 63 Arcade Lane.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, we received a, oh, sorry, Dylan Machampell with the town's Housing Department, Deputy Housing Director. We received a request for a sewer connection permit fee waiver for 63 Arcade Lane. This property is a covenant home, so it would be in line with the town's policy for fee waiver requests and past practice. So our ask is that you waive 100% of the fee.
Anybody have any questions or motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Next up, similar request.
Yep. So this is the exact same thing, but for eight tombs court. Exact same thing. It's a covenant, covenant lot, so we're asking for a waiver of 100% of the fee.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
In one, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You go ahead. I was just gonna clarify that this, just for everybody, this is for the sewer connection fee only. It's not the sewer capacity fee.
And just a quick comment, just not for tonight. I support both of them tonight. I've recently been reading Strong Towns, a couple of their books. They're the people that came and spoke for the kickoff of the plan, the plan for the planning board and master plan. And they were, their recommendation is not to waive fees, but they had some interesting alternatives. Because they said, "If you're waiving fees, you're just falling further behind." And we have so many needs, and other towns have so many needs. And what they said is they would delay the fees with minor interest or no interest, so that when the people are through paying, you know, their mortgage 15, 20 years, then the fees go on. They're very little, but you know, but it's still, the money is still coming back in. And it's something I think at some point we should explore. It's important that we do this, but I think it's also important that we have money to do more of it. And so how do we balance that? And I think that's, it was just interesting. I thought that they'd be saying, "Oh, no, you have to do all this." And they were actually saying the opposite. So it was just something for us all to be thinking about and for Brian to be thinking about. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don.
I think I have the next one, too.
Are you gonna do the next one? Housing Office Request for Approval and Execution of a Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for a Rental Project at 18 through 26 Sparks Avenue.
So, yep, we're asking you to approve and execute the Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for 18 through 26 Sparks Avenue. This agreement is between the Commonwealth through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the EOHLC, the Town of Nantucket, and the developer, Acme Mid Island LLC. Just as a quick reminder, this is a rental development with 32 total units, eight of which are restricted to 80% area median income, but all 32 will count towards our subsidized housing inventory list. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have, but in short, this agreement certifies the affordability restriction and is key to getting the units counted towards the shy.
Any questions?
I'll just say, the Affordable Housing Trust has worked really hard with this project to make sure that it is shyless qualified and that we're making appropriate investments in the community, and so I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your work on all of these. Town Manager's Report.
Okay, so as the board knows, we've been doing monthly departmental reports, and this month, we have Department of Public Works. We're moving Solid Waste off a couple of weeks. There is a lot going on in the Public Works Department. As you will see, the director, Drew Patnott, is going to present, and I think he will be assisted by some of his staff members who are present. Drew?
Thanks, Libby. Drew Patnott, Director of Public Works. And as Libby mentioned, I will be joined tonight by my deputy directors, Richard Moore and Paul Burrard, and our Parks and Rec Manager, Charlie Plackey, who's online, and Central Fleet Manager, Nick Torres. Thanks for having us. I don't typically love public speaking, but I always look forward to this presentation because it's a great opportunity for us to highlight all that our staff do day in and day out, and some of our successes. So, thanks again. Go to the next slide. Quickly, just review the agenda. We'll talk about some of the goals we have for this fiscal year, what our organizational structure looks like. This did originally start as a budget-only presentation, so we will touch on the budget and our current year capital projects and where those stand. And then we'll go through some other key projects that we have going on, of course, highlight some recent achievements, and then we'll close from there. Next slide. I know there's a lot of text on the screen. It's kind of small, so I'm not going to go over the mission or our list of responsibilities, but I wanted to highlight our goals for this fiscal year. You know, first and foremost, this is something we have been working on, and we'd like to really push across the finish line, which is a review and update of our road opening and curb cut regulations and permits. There's a ton of work in our public right-ofways that affects all of us that live and visit here. And so we want to improve the process and what the requirements are for contractors working in our roadways. We've also talked a lot about the facilities maintenance plan, which is an update that Paul will speak to a little bit in detail later, but we really want to push that forward. We have some individual projects that we've been successful in completing to date, but we want to push even harder to move things forward for a lot of our facilities. And then lastly, we want to advance the final design of a new DPW facility on Shedd Bush Road, which inevitably supports everything that we do day in and day out. Next slide. Again, I know this is really small. This is our organizational chart, but you can start to see the six divisions of the DPW. You can actually just go to the next slide. And our six divisions are Administration, Operations, a lot of communities call it a highway department, Facilities, Parks and Rec, Central Fleet, and Solid Waste. And we'll cover Solid Waste on the 19th. We have 49 budgeted positions again for this fiscal year, which does include the Solid Waste Division. As of right now, we have six vacancies. We had five as of last week, and then Jordan's last day was Friday. But a positive note is we had 11 this time last year when we presented. So we are moving in the right direction, and that's always a good thing. Of the six divisions, Facilities, Parks and Rec, and Solid Waste are all fully staffed. So that's always, always nice to highlight. A goal of ours, and certainly always a challenge as well, is improving our retention and reducing turnover, and then, of course, succession planning. And you'll see on Thursday at our Employee Appreciation Event, we have some longtime employees that unfortunately can't be with us forever. So, go to the next slide. So, sorry, I'm already on the wrong page. So just a quick check in on last year's and this year's budgets. We have seven separate budgets to analyze and adjust each fiscal year, which is a big effort, and our whole management team works collaboratively to develop an appropriate budget every year. To summarize briefly, last year, we were substantially under budget, largely due to vacant positions. Our operating budgets, however, were nearly 100% expended across most of those individual budgets. Of course, increased staffing is a great thing, but that leaves less money able to be transferred from payroll to operating budgets if necessary at the end of a fiscal year. So being fully staffed or closer to it is always a great thing, but that certainly means we need to be a little more diligent with our operating budgets throughout the fiscal year to understand the implications or the decisions, you know, we make throughout the year to make sure that we're situated for emergencies and regular initiatives that we plan to carry out through the end of the fiscal year. Go to the next slide. I wanted to touch on our fiscal year '26, which we're in right now, EIRs. Of course, you know, electric rates are increasing, and we're also increasing electrification of our facilities, specifically the HVAC systems. So we adjusted electricity line item to account for that. And then also last year, we bid custodial services for public building, public office cleaning, and public restroom cleaning. So an adjustment was made to account for the total value of those existing contracts. We also included a one-time EIR to send our staff to CDL training school and then to get their licenses. With the help of HR, we were able to put together an on-island program for DPW sewer and airport employees, and then actually saw seven DPW employees obtain their CDLP, which was a huge success. I also wanted to highlight that we also created a line item for this fiscal year that somehow we didn't previously have to add new or replace existing equipment that otherwise wouldn't be, really didn't have a home as far as funding within our operating budget. These are also things that are not expensive enough to qualify as a capital expenditure, unless we're neglecting all of them, you know, plows, spreaders, roadside mowing equipment, things like that. So we were able to actually not increase the budget, but move money from other line items into this so that we could get on a regular replacement schedule, which is really the most appropriate and responsible way of doing it, but also is a benefit to our Central Fleet and operations staff as far as maintenance and scheduling those replacements. So we're seeing the fruits of doing that. You know, next slide. These are preliminary FY27 EIRs. So of course, we did one quick kind of internal review of these, but these are by no means approved. Of course, electricity, gas, and then there are new, there's a new sewer rate structure that'll affect the billing for public buildings. So that's reflected in our budget for next fiscal year. Again, the custodial services, there are increases to some of those contracts a year over year. But one thing I wanted to highlight is the request for two additional labors in our facilities group. Our deputy director, Paul, confirmed, we have 61 individual buildings, not including sheds, to maintain. And we have, including Paul, seven facility staff members. So we are looking, or hopeful that we can increase our staffing in that division of our department. The gravel road maintenance-related line items, the repair and maintenance of road construction, and the DPW road materials, those are the line items that we have a on-call road grading contract and ball-calling of aggregates to the island, to the DPW, so that we can further maintain our gravel roads. We put a lot of time and effort into our gravel road maintenance over the last year, and we were successful in part because of these contracts, but also obviously we didn't get a ton of rain this year, so that certainly helped out. But we'd like to continue that going forward. And Mo will speak on some of our successes as far as gravel road maintenance in a little bit. And then lastly, on-call tree trimming. We have over 1,200 tagged and mapped town trees, and that of course doesn't include tens of thousands of pines within our public right-ofways. And we have a full-time, two-man tree crew and a tree truck that's out on the road every day. But of course, there's storms and other things that require additional manpower, specialized equipment, et cetera, and tree work is very expensive. So we've included that as a request for next fiscal year as well. You can go to the next slide, Erica. So anyways, enough about the budget. We'll get into our capital requests for this fiscal year. I am going to skip the transportation capital request. We did a presentation for this board three, four weeks ago and covered all of these in pretty good detail. But on the bottom, you'll see the new DPW facility, which of course didn't pass at Town Meeting or the ballot. And just wanted to give an update on kind of where we're at with that project. So since Town Meeting, we've completed the design development phase, which is phase two of three of the total design. We've also completed an energy model and energy assessment for Mass Save Path One rebates. We have reviewed and memorialized that DD set, and we will be moving forward with a couple of important things. Value engineering, specifically revising the floor plan to eliminate anything that's not 100% critical and doesn't sacrifice the future operational effectiveness of the building, as well as evaluating other cost-saving measures. The last cost estimate that was done was spring of 2024 after the schematic design phase. So we plan to develop an updated cost estimate, since the design development set has far, far more detail and information than the schematic design set. And obviously, we also have kind of new information as far as where the market is now. And interestingly enough, you know, in talking with our architect and engineers and our OPM after Town Meeting, we of course weren't the only community that didn't move forward with a big capital project. And in the months since, we've, in other communities, seen much, much more competitive construction pricing, which is a good thing, especially given the uncertainty kind of the national, international level. So, you know, we're hopeful that an updated number is a little more palatable, especially considering some of the adjustments we're going to make. We're also doing a financial analysis on the savings that would be realized over the 50, 60 years after constructing a new facility. And that's largely attributed to the lifespan, reduced maintenance, repair, replacement costs, et cetera, of our equipment and vehicles. And then the last thing we're working on is trying to develop a, or pull together a DPW facility advisory work group. The goal of this Citizens Work Group would be to review the project essentially from inception to now, and really kind of look back at what's been done over the last 10 years. That's how long this has been going on. And hopefully gain a better understanding collectively of, you know, what decisions were made and why, and kind of where we're at, and hopefully get people on the same page as far as the path forward. We are also still actively evaluating the potential for off-site mitigation. That would allow the town and the Hunting Association to use more, ideally all 27 acres of this very valuable town parcel. So obviously, if we're successful with that, that would be a huge win. So with that, I've done enough talking, and I will turn it over to Central Fleet Manager Nick Torres to continue with some of our FY26 capital. Nick Torres to continue with some of our FY '26 capital projects.
Good evening. As Drew mentioned, I'm Nick Torres, the Central Fleet Manager. We're going to talk about some of our capital project status as well. For Park and Rec, we had a capital request for natural grass turf maintenance. We've already received that piece of equipment. It's on the lot and ready to go. We also have under contract attachments for aerators and surface prep that'll help us service all of our natural playing fields. Central Fleet capital requests, we had six, three of which are before you this evening, four to go under contract, two assessors vehicles and an IT vehicle, two of which we've already taken delivery of. The e-transit van facilities is on the property, as well as our front-end loader. The one remaining piece there is a 10-wheel dump truck, which we're just in the spec-ing out phase. Those are all bespoke builds, and so they take quite a long time to get put into motion. The point here being that is, once we get an appropriation, we're not wasting any time on acting upon them. We turn around fairly quickly to get the equipment and vehicles into the fleet and out into the field so we can reduce downtime and maximize the efficiency of what is, quite frankly, an aging fleet and in desperate need of some replacement. Next slide, please. I want to highlight some of our key active projects. In Central Fleet, we're working right now on integrating the Verizon Asset Tracking System. It allows us to do a number of things. The first of which is, it allows us to place assets during storm response or emergency response where we need them in real time. We can see where things are going on and where things are and get them to that spot without having to rely on radio communication and finding out where people are. The second thing it does, which is even more important, I feel, is it allows us to be proactive on service. The program speaks to us in real time as far as engine codes being thrown or any potential issues with vehicles or equipment. That allows us to be proactive and perhaps stop those things from losing downtime and being out of rotation. We are also, I would love very much to roll that out, we're about three quarters away done with the DPW fleet. I would like very much to roll that out to the entire town fleet, simply because there's a lot of vehicles in the town fleet that have multiple users, but no one true owner as far as service goes. It makes us be relatively reactionary and puts us on our back foot as we don't understand or know there's a problem with a vehicle or a piece of equipment until we get the call that it's down. Now we've got downtime, and again, it's a missing piece of the fleet. I feel as though if we could roll this out townwide, it would allow us, again, in real time, to be proactive and anticipate these things and hopefully stop these things from being off the road for extended periods of time. We're also very actively, as in a case-by-case situation, looking at replacing old gas vehicles with EVs or hybrids. Of the six vehicles we spoke about just previously, the IT Escape is a hybrid, and the facilities van we've taken delivery of is a full EV, trying to keep with our Green Community Initiative. That said, I will pass it off to Richard Moore.
I'm Richard Moore, the Deputy Director of Operations for the DPW, and I want to highlight you on some of the achievements of the Operations Department and some of the things we aim to do in the future. The DPW contracted environmental partners to perform bike path, to perform bike path surface condition assessment of all 35 miles of bike path. The bike path maintenance contract should be out for bid either January or February. Some of the in-house sidewalk improvements. The DPW addressed significant weed overgrowth and dirt buildup on multiple sidewalk locations. The weed and dirt buildup removal was critical to restoring the full intended width of the public sidewalk. Some of those locations were North Beach Street between Eastern Street and Bath and Beach Road, Cliff Road between 46 Cliff Road and the entrance to Something Natural, Orange Street between Shangri-La and Millie's Mid Island at One Sparks Avenue, Surfside Road between the Nantucket High School entrance and the Nantucket Elementary School entrance. Some of the contracted side work projects that we had, these projects included the removal and resetting of brick sidewalks, asphalt walk surfaces, and curbing at various locations. Some of these locations were North Water Street from Broad to Step Lane, the corner of Broad Street and Center Street. Surfside Road asphalt sidewalk across from the high school was deconstructed, rebuilt, and widened. Also, the removal and resetting of Belgium blocks along North Water Street at various Recession center line reflectors will be installed in various locations, specifically, forgive my southern accent, roads where speed limits exceed 25 miles an hour, for example, Pope's Road, Maticat Road, and Homic Pond Road. This will increase visibility of the center line in poorly lit areas as they reflect headlights to prevent lane drift and reduce nighttime collisions. This should go out to bid this winter and be installed this spring, if all goes well. Steel-backed timber guardrails will be installed in various locations. Some of these locations are North Cambridge Street near Maticat Marine, the first bridge near the DPW, the first bridge on Maticat Road just after the DPW, the second bridge on Maticat just after Fisher's Landing Road, Sparks Avenue near Gold Star Drive, Tom Nevers Road between 122 and 124, Tom Nevers Road near 45 Tom Nevers Road, and Pope's Road between 24 and 48. This will also be put out to bid this winter, and the funding will be Chapter 90 monies. So now, I was rolling so fast. Now I'm going to pass you on to Paul Verard, and he's going to fill you guys in on facilities.
I'll make a quick comment. The reflectors are going to make Mr. Atherton very happy. He's been asking for years, and the work that they did right outside of Coffin Park was amazing. How much the sidewalk there had been overtaken. When they cleaned it, they got half a truck full of dirt just from one sidewalk. It was pretty amazing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Verard. I'm the Deputy Director of Facilities at the DPW. Perfect. So I'm gonna, Drew spoke to the DPW facility already, so I'm going to move past that to municipal restroom renovations. That project, which Drew also spoke about a couple of weeks ago, that project's currently on hold, hopefully until the spring. Let's see here. So the facility maintenance plan. The town has done this before in the past. In 2015, we had an assessment done of most of our town buildings. We've made a lot of progress since then, but with the age of this study, it needs to be done again. So we're looking to add buildings that weren't in the original study and also add a plan with the study so that we have a way of tackling all of the recommended improvements in it. We're looking for three phases, starting with exterior, the building envelope, waterproofing, insulation. The second phase would be systems like electrical, plumbing if we needed, HVAC. Phase three will be the finishes and possibly reconfiguring the space. Next, with the municipal facilities outdoor lighting. We've been having an awful lot of help from Gail Walker and Nantucket Lights, and we had a professional come to the island to do a full inventory of all of our exterior lights. And next time you're at trivia and they ask how many lights does the town currently own, the answer is 1,420. Of these lights, somewhere between 100 and 200 are currently in line with our outdoor lighting bylaws. So this is going to be a massive project, but in the end, it'll be beneficial, it'll be more functional and more energy efficient. With beach access upgrades, once again, we're applying for a grant with Massachusetts Office of Disability, and we're looking to improve accessibility at some of our locations, mainly Children's Beach, Jetties, Galley, and a few public right of ways off of Halbert Avenue, where there is a bulkhead, but currently no boardwalks. And at this time, I'm going to hand this off to Charlie Pelacki, our Parks and Rec Manager.
Hey, thanks, Paul. So continuing on with key active projects, the first one here is Tom Nevers Debris Project, which is really phase one of removing debris left from the old naval base, focusing on the debris that is on the beach itself. Bids for this project were actually opened yesterday afternoon. We are currently evaluating the four submissions and hope to have an award as soon as possible. The other ongoing project is an Nobodyer Field expansion and playground project. We are about a 90% design plan for Nobodyer Fields, hope to complete those design plans and put that project out to bid in the upcoming months. The playground equipment for Nobodyer was actually on tonight's contracts. By ordering this now before year end, we can save 10 or 15% on apparatus costs, and the main construction and installation of that playground will coincide with the field project. The other project we have going on is, this past March, we installed surveillance cameras at seven of the parks across the island. Now that we've had the cameras up for eight months, we've been able to identify some blind spots and some areas that we'd like to see some more coverage, so we're working on making some improvements there. And we're also going to be expanding to put a camera on the Wisconsin Footbridge to hopefully better monitor the next time that gets bumped by a vehicle. To the next slide, please. Some of the recent achievements have been the completion of the Jetties Tennis Court, which is the first big project to be completed from the Parks and Rec Master Plan. This project was originally projected to cost $1.9 million, but was completed for 1.2. As a result, we're looking to seek every appropriation of the Mini Borrowing Authority at this year's annual town meeting to make some improvements to the building at the courts in an effort to improve the overall experience of coming down and playing tennis on our public courts. The courts were a great success this summer, hosting just shy of 7,000 hours of use, and that was just what was in the reservation software, didn't include anybody that did some walk-on tennis. The other project we were able to complete this year that was capital funded was big installation out in Tom Nevers, adding a playground structure that's seen here on the slide. It was a very welcome addition to the park, and we saw a large uptick of use, families coming out to use the playground, and I can only imagine how much more use we'll get out of this once the bike path is installed. See, at this point, I will pass this back to Paul, continuing with facilities.
Let's see here. A couple of recent achievements that we'd like to highlight. Down at Jetties, believe it or not, there is a small shed that is a historic contributing structure. It was in pretty bad shape, and at this time last year, we had just begun the renovation of the exterior of that building, and that's completed. If you go down there, it's very drastic before and after. We also worked with Culture and Tourism in support, kind of a group project, and we did a full exterior improvements project where all the windows were replaced, siding the trim, it was painted. Again, that building gets so much use. It was a wonderful project. We're looking to improve beach accessibility with, oh, I'm sorry, we did, we did go through a lot of our boardwalks. In the bottom right there, that's Jetties Beach. These boardwalks are something that we build in-house by hand. We have them at many beaches. I looked at all of the surface area that these cover. If you take all of the boardwalk that DPW has made, you could cover an NBA court and a pickleball court. So I think that the strides that we made for accessibility of our beaches are great. I think that we have, we just need to continue forward with that. Downtown bench renovation, this might seem insignificant, but believe it or not, we have 150 of those little green benches downtown, and this is such a specific Nantucket thing. And it's just one of those things that the, you may not even know that DPW handles. And more than anything, I'm very proud of my crew. They went through 150 benches. These things either fall apart from where, or cars, and just walk around, and they made a really significant improvement across the entire island. And finally, a fun little project in the bottom left there, Wisconsin Footbridge. Recently, mysteriously, it fell off of its foundation, probably the car. But my crew went down there, they were able to jack it out, shift it back over, resecure it to the footing, and it's a historic landmark. And just like many things that we're responsible for, my crew just jumped in the action, so just want to highlight it. Thank you. I'm going to hand it back over to Mo.
So some of our recent achievements. The DPW alone with our on-call road grading contractor, Strang Trucking, oh, sorry. Yeah, Paul, you know I'm short. Okay, yes. The DPW alone with our on-call road grading contractor, Strang Trucking, reconstructed West Myakamit Road. We worked together to haul about 500 cubic yards of field and crushed concrete or road material to raise the road grade because, over the years, the roads kept getting graded, but no materials being added. So the road shoulder was, you know, a foot to 18 inches higher than the actual road was, and we're down the sand. So that means when you grade it, within seconds after you leave, it looked like it did before you got there. But that being said, along with that, we graded, scarified, mixed, and conditioned the road. The graded road created, they created a crown on the flat stretches of the road and super-elevated it in the deep corners so that the water could drain or not sit on the road, thus increasing the lifespan of the graded road. The DPW held a road grading class for our employees because they could use some training on the real techniques. Some of these guys are young, they learn to operate the equipment, but not how to properly do it. So we called in Bay State Roads, and their guy came in to teach the lesson. Some of the techniques he taught was, you know, how to center crown a road, do super-elevation, and these techniques, along with the proper materials, allow these guys to not only grade the roads, but allow the road, because of the condition of the road, to be compacted and to stay in place a lot longer. And I've even noticed, even though it didn't rain much this summer, these last few weeks when it's rained hard, I go out, and some of these roads where there would be big rust and potholes have pretty much held up. I mean, the maintenance storm is minimal that needs to be done. So away from that and on to our two fairgrounds road parking lot maintenance reconstruction. So we had a MEPA mitigation to restore portion of that lot as a permeable surface. The rest of the lot was reconfigured for maximum parking while simultaneously improving traffic movement. You could get around a lot easier now. Jetties upper parking lot and lower parking lot reconfiguration. Jetties upper and lower lot layout changes, added ADA spaces to the lower lot, moved a nerd or bus stop to improve circulation safety, to improve circulation and safety, increase capacity, more spaces for bicycle racks, in line with the Select Board strategic plan, and just overall worked much better this summer despite how busy it was. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. So just to wrap up, we share the same challenges that a lot of other departments do. It's obviously staffing in general, but we also don't just want bodies, right? We want skilled labor and some trades positions, and those positions remain hard to fill. I think, frankly speaking, housing, obviously, and compensation are always biggest factors. We live in a very, very competitive community as far as talent goes. We say it all the time, turnover is expensive, retention and experience is valuable, and our succession planning is critical. We try to do our best to fill positions shortly after they become vacant, but constant turnover can also be exhausting, and it can lead to burnout in our current staff, stuff to train someone, and you have a kind of a revolving door of new employees. So we work really hard to empower our employees, train our employees, and keep them around as long as we can. And with that being said, obviously, I got a great team at the DPW. I think we're a great place to work. We have good staff and a good culture, and I think we're going to continue improving throughout this fiscal year and beyond. So go to the next slide. And just to end, obviously, we got a lot going on, and I just want to thank the Select Board and Town Admin and all the other departments that we work very closely with for your continued support. So thank you. If you guys have any questions... If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer or we can move on. I didn't know that this many people were going to show up for our presentation. This is great. Thanks, everybody.
You're popular tonight.
I don't know if it's us, but I'd like to think so. Thanks.
Thanks, Drew. It was great. Good job. Did you want to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, I'm really glad that this many people were here to hear how much goes on at the DPW because I think a lot of that gets lost. The DPW touches all of our lives every day. Whether we're entering a town building or driving down a road or sitting on a bench in town. And I think sometimes they are the most under recognized, one of the most under recognized or undervalued departments in the town. And I really appreciate what Drew's done and the staff. And so anyway.
I always appreciate it when you guys are here in person. It's really nice. Rick Atherton?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Don. I just wanted to comment, I was watching earlier and was specifically intrigued by the reflectors going in and home.
Oh, you heard your name called out.
I did, and I sort of chuckled, I said, Matt got there before I did. I had to hustle to log in, so here I am. And I think the reflectors are a real important public safety issue. I'm glad they're going in on at least three roads. Maybe there are other important arteries for the town to consider. But the fact that they're going is really important and I thank you. I don't want to say how long I've been interested in those, but I will accept that they're going in this year. So thank you all very much for that.
Thanks, Rick. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Just very briefly, I just want to say thank you, Drew, and your team for the presentation. And as Drew stated on staffing and turnover and retention, I think that's exactly why in your previous presentations to the board that a new facility is so important for you. And to be able to keep staff and to make them feel welcome and to be able to do their jobs properly, I think it's really important. And I think the committee is a great, the Citizens Work Group is a great initiative to get off the ground. And hopefully there could be some input and we can bring that back at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next, I want to really thank the DPW guys as well. You would never know they don't make presentations every day. That was really good. Thank you guys very much. Okay, Continued Review of Town Sponsored Warrant Articles for 2026 Annual Town Meeting. So I think the idea here is I have an updated outline of potential warrant articles. And I think the idea is to start with the proposed amendments to the noise bylaw, which have come before you a few times now. And initiated mostly by the Wisconsin Civic Association. And I think we have Carol Greenberg online to give you a little update of what she's been working on. She's been working very hard to do a lot of outreach with people to be able to present something to the board that is, has some consensus behind it. I'm not sure we're quite there yet, but in any event, she may want to take us through what she's done to date. Hi, Carol.
Hi, hi all. Thanks so much for your time and for everything you do. So when we last met in September, I was asked to go out and do some more community outreach, which we have done to be inclusive and make sure we reach as many people as possible. Specifically, of course, the landscaping community and construction community. And we have done that with letters to the editor, to, we posted in X Door, Chamber of Commerce, and the Nantucket Civic League and their 23 associations. So I think we've done a good job there, asking people to, you know, to please respond to our town manager with any letters and to please come, if able, to this meeting this evening or zoom in. We have made changes since we were last together. And that was to include Eastern Standard Time and daylight savings time so that workers could begin on the dates of November through March an hour earlier because there was concern about daylight. I would say that the only pushback we've had, and I'm not saying that in a negative or positive way, is perhaps to start at a 7:30 start time versus 8:00. I believe you have a letter in your packet from Toscana about that. We have suggested 8:00, but of course compromise is always on the table. The current bylaws, I just want to reiterate the way it is now with the non-peak versus peak in the nonhistoric areas. It does start at 7:00 AM and 7:30 in peak season. And in the old historic sections of Nantucket, it begins non-peak at 7:00 and is now peak season does start at 8:00 AM. We're also very keen on making this enforceable. We've obviously talked with the police chief. I believe the police chief suggested putting in the dates of November to March for daylight savings time, to be more specific. I'm open to any questions. I would appreciate any feedback from the group.
Thanks, Carol. I think there are some people here wishing to speak on this.
Hi there, Carl Lindvall. So I guess the first part of my question is, what problem are you actually trying to solve? Is it, is it that noise is causing an issue? Or are you trying to create more stringent bylaws that are more cohesive?
Would you like me to answer that? Yes, sorry. Right now, as it stands, nobody understands what the rules or regulations are. So you have peak and non-peak. You have historic and nonhistoric. You have different dates of the year. So someone who's working in the historic district a half a block away is the nonhistoric. And the dates and times are all varied. So this would be conforming across Nantucket so that it can be enforceable. Although I would say that most workers are great neighbors and very conscientious and really try their best to start and end at reasonable hours. But the idea is to make it cohesive across the island so it's easier for enforcement. Because right now, it's impossible to enforce.
Brooke? Yeah, and it's not just enforcement, it's easier for people to comply because it's clearer and more consistent. I think that was one of the major goals. Like, to Carol's point, I could be working here or working here and having a different rule apply at the very same time. So I appreciated very much the effort to unify it, simplify it so that both people who are trying to figure out how to comply and people who are concerned that there's non-compliance, it's really clear. So, and then for the police to be able to show up and not have to parse out what street address it is and whether it's in a certain district or not.
Yeah, and I had actually requested the noon on Sundays and holidays so that there was some clarity on that. Scott Wilson, did you have another question, Carol?
Follow-up, sorry. Those are just one question. My other question is, you mentioned, you know, this outreach. Every contractor and landscaper that I've talked to has taken great issue with this. I haven't found a single person who's like, that sounds like a great idea. So my suggestion would be to meet with, you know, the different boards. And like, I know there's a construction group that meets every month. I know that there's a landscaper group. Like, I would actually talk to them and about how this might affect their bottom line and their business. I also, you know, in a way, take this article to become a Bad Neighbor article. Meaning that there's going to be now more phone calls to the police department for noise complaints. And now, you know, rather than dealing with what I would consider an actual emergency, they're responding to noise complaints. I personally, when I have an issue with time and noise with my neighbor, I call them or I go knock on their door and have a conversation. So to have this enforced by the town versus being a good neighbor, I don't really like the sentiment that I'm feeling from this.
May I respond? Did reach out to the landscaping community as well as the Nantucket Builders Association and about 25 other organizations across the island. Town Manager, Police Chief, Nantucket Land Council, Nantucket Preservation Trust, the real estate people, Steamship Authority Planning Board. I did engage in those oral telephone conversations. And in the packet, there is a summary of noise ordinance proposal feedback and context that I did, that I did send to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you, Carol. I do have a hand up online, but Matt, I'll go to you first.
Yeah, I will say it is, you know, there are existing rules now. And there's enforcement now, but it's very difficult to do. I have a friend who's, you know, has called a couple of Fridays complaining because the work was starting at 5:30 in the morning. And it was, and when I thought about it, it was happening. So the crew, it was only on Fridays, the other days they were on, they were at the right time. It's so that they can get back on the boat Friday afternoon to get home. So they were starting, you know, very early, waking up an entire neighborhood, you know. And so, so I do think the consistency that is being offered would be helpful. And it would help, I do believe it quite a bit.
Thanks, Pat. I have Scott Wilson online and then I'll go back to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. My name is Scott Wilson. I am the co-president of the Nantucket Civic League along with my good friend Charlie Stott, who could not be here tonight. I speak on behalf of all of our 23 neighborhood associations. We recently sent a letter to the Select Board and the Town Manager conveying our support for the proposed noise bylaw. The current regulations are a patchwork of varying noise curfews that are both inane and impossible to enforce. The excellent work of Carol Greenberg and her Wisconsin team is an effort to standardize the noise regulations that will bring much needed peace and will allow the police department and other relevant town agencies with their enforcement duties. We urge you to add it to the warrant for the 2026 town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And at the mic, could you just state your name?
Matthew Polka. So I'm a landscaper, Matthew Polka Landscape. My big concern with this proposal, a big part of my business is bringing in plant material. A lot of the jobs I get is because of the plant material I get. This past year, from the last week of March through mid-June, I received 11 18-wheeler loads of plant material. Usually because it is an 80-foot-long tractor trailer. The Steamship Authority asked, we do it on Sundays and we need a same-day round trip. Technically, under version two, that would make those loads unloaded illegal, which concerns me. It's a big part of my business. Sometimes due to weather or cancellations, those loads sit and we get them at a really bad time. And we pull it together and we unload them and we get it done. Again, it just, it concerns me because I don't want to break the rules. But it's a grind here and you got to do what you got to do to get the job and make the money. So for me, that's, just wondering what the solution would be for something like that. Thank you.
Can I have a question? Are you fine if it was 7:30 or all, and we're not, other than Sunday, are you all right with the others? I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I had a second part, but I was going to lay off. I was more worried about the loads. No, honestly, I'm more of a small business, I'm a very custom outfit. Most of my crew's been with me from 2015 or 2016 to now. And we utilize every hour of every day. In the summer, it's pretty demanding. The winter's demanding and in a lot of ways, we offset it as, a lot of the properties I work at will do the pruning in the winter. So in the summer, it's a little slower, you know, it's very minimal. You take away a half hour, an hour in the morning, and you take away two hours in the evening. That adds up pretty quick. And for a four-man crew, for example, you could be talking about losing 60 man-hours in a five-day work week. So to me, that's a little bit, that's tough because you're already pushing it. And the only solution you could think would be, do you have to get more employees? Or do you have to get more trucks? Or do you have to get more equipment to get it done in a quicker time? And I don't think any of us are interested in doing that. So, or I know I'm not, I would could say. So that would be my thought on that.
All right, thank you.
There's another question.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair of the Speaker, are you guys working after dark in the winter?
No, we go to dark. It's just not really possible unless there is an emergency, like something were to come in, like a load or something. Then we figure out a way to light it, get it done. But no, not typically.
So I feel as though these, with the shift of the time zone accommodates that. We're still putting those work hours in daylight hours to the best of our abilities. So, so I hear you. I hear him through you.
Yeah, yeah. And anyway. The Sunday thing, I think that's, you know, it's definitely something to think about, talk about. Amy?
Hi, Amy Eldridge. I just want to kind of tandem off Mr. Polka's question. Comment was, like, trucking companies that need to be firing up 18-wheelers at 5:30 in the morning to get to a 6:30 ferry. Does that apply to all this as well? Because there's huge trucking companies that if they can't fire up an 18-wheeler to go to the boat till 8:00, it doesn't make sense to me. And there are situations, my husband works for a trucking company, that loads get refused at the Steamship Authority and do come over on Sundays that need to be critically unloaded before the noon noise ordinance goes into effect. And it's not the trucker's fault and it's not the steamship, it's how they have to balance the boat with these heavy loads coming over that put these people in predicaments to have to operate on Sundays before the noon. I mean, it's just stuff to think about. And whether or not, for instance, my husband's company is at the end of Old South Road in the old Kenny Coffin pit area, which is an industrial area. And there are some houses in that industrial area that call the police on them all the time when they fire up the 18-wheeler and the tractor and go to the boat. And it's like, they're within their rights to do that as what they're hauling. But like, what does that do to Sun Island Transit, Cape Cod Express, FedEx? All these people that utilize a restricted schedule at the steamship.
I don't think the supply is to that.
So can I just note? Vehicles driving is not covered under the noise bylaw. Vehicles are allowed to drive. It's whether or not you've got, you're dumping loads of, you know, aggregate at somebody's property and, you know, it's construction noise. It's not starting your vehicle to drive to the boat.
Right, but there are some cases in which those companies that have to drive are having to do those things. So that's, I'm just wondering if that's under consideration under that. Thank you.
I have two more hands up online. Thomas Laughlin? I'll go back and forth between online and the mic.
Great, thank you. Thanks for calling on me, Ms. Gibson. The, I think, Mr., is it Polka? His concern and Ms. Eldridge's concerns about the heavier equipment bringing in materials off the boat to their yards or whatever. I don't think that's really even addressed by this particular, these two noise bylaws that we're talking about right now. One, one of the bylaws relates to.
Could we keep side conversations outside, please? Sorry.
One of the, one of the bylaws relates to construction equipment being used in the process of construction. And the other relates to power tools, hand power tools, saws, grinders, or powered lawn or garden tools. So I think that the examples of, you know, unloading from the steamship, bringing, you know, bulk quantities of materials to the yard or whatever, I don't think that that's really meant to be addressed. And it's not specifically written into this, these particular bylaws.
I was uncertain if Mr. Polka was referring to, when. I wasn't certain if Mr. Polka was referring to, when it's plant material and it comes in, do you have to put it right in the ground?
No, you're missing the word.
Oh, sorry. To unload, to unload them on the site.
Yes, and, and the way where we do this at, it is a commercial area and it is totally legit everything happening, but there are houses right next to it that could, you know, it could be an issue. But no, it's the equipment we're using. It's heavy equipment machinery.
Understand, okay. Just wanted to make sure we were clear. Sarah Alger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here representing the Nantucket Golf Course. I was interested to hear what the people from Maya Comet and Skontic Golf had to say, but I don't see them here anymore. Nantucket Golf was not part of the group that was consulted and this would be disastrous for all of the golf courses, is my understanding. And they have tee times that start between 7:00 and 7:30. They have to be out there mowing beginning at 5:30. We've looked at other towns that have dealt with this and it seems pretty routine that things like agriculture, like I don't know what's happening at the farms, but I would think that they would have an issue as well. Agriculture, snow removal and golf courses are generally exempted from the noise bylaws for this very, very same purpose. And that's what we'd be asking for in this particular bylaw.
Understood.
May I respond?
Yes, Carol, go ahead.
And you write, Sarah, I didn't, we did not reach out to the golf courses because we understood they're exempt from this, as are the farms, Sustainable Nantucket, et cetera.
The, the golf courses are not currently exempt, but that could be...
Right.
And it should be, in my mind.
We, we think they should be, and if I can just add one other thing. I mean, we're, we're lucky because I think the closest house to the Nantucket Golf Course is probably 100, like a football field away. We've never had a complaint. I think people understand that a golf course has got to be mowing and doing stuff early in the morning. But we would like that exemption written in because we don't want to be in a situation where we're violating the law every time we go out and do our routine mowing.
Yep. And in practice, they should still be good neighbors, especially when they do have houses that are close to our, like at Maya Comet and...
We've never had a complaint. I think we do everything we can to be the best neighbor we can to the entire community.
Thanks, Sarah. Matt?
If we're on the golf club course discussion, what's the quietest equipment that a golf course can have? You know, is there, is there quieter mowers for certain areas that are near, near people? You know, does anyone know that?
Mark.
All right, that's, that would be great.
Hi, Mark Lucas, Nantucket Golf Club. There are fairway mowers, that can be electric, hybrid, and decibel ratings around 75, even lower than that. For blowers, electric blowers as well, so, I mean, especially if you have a neighbor or closer butter, you know, oftentimes golf courses can work with their neighbors in those situations, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of, that's helpful. Because I wouldn't, if we're going to exempt it, I would love to specify, you know, be good neighbors and have the right kind of equipment, you know?
Yeah, and I, I've been at Nantucket Golf Club for almost 30 years now, but I was at Greenwich Country Club before and we used to walk around with a decibel meter to a few neighbors that requested it, so.
Thanks, Mark. Matt Galvin is from Maya Comet and he's online, so just since they came up, I'll bring them in and then I'll come, come to you, Kevin, for Sankey.
So you want Matt first?
Or, go ahead, Kevin. And then Matt will come to you.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Dale. I'm the attorney for the Sankey Head Golf Club and I want to support Sarah Alger's request that golf clubs be exempt from this noise bylaw. As you know, Sankey Head Golf Club has been where it is now since 1921, more than 100 years. It's been a good neighbor. It does a lot for the community. We had one complaint this summer about noise and the club responded to it and worked with that neighbor. So I think it's a reasonable exemption and I ask the board to support noise bylaws that exempt existing golf clubs and future golf clubs from those provisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Galvin, you need to unmute.
Sorry, Harry, I'm, thank you very much and sorry to jump the gun earlier in, in the meeting. I'll keep it short since the other golf clubs have already spoken, but as, as I think everybody knows, Maya Comet borders housing on several of its holes and we endeavor to, to really keep the noise down. We utilize electric equipment where possible and where we do start earlier in the day, we do it away from the houses. But as, as others have said, an exemption for the golf courses would be integral in allowing them to continue their operation and provide tee times in a full day schedule without significant negative impacts. So I thank you for considering that exemption.
Thank you. And I also have Mary Longacre online.
Thank you, Don. Mary Longacre, I'm speaking as a citizen, not for any organization. I'm only seeing this as refers to noise. Is it commercial activity only? Because I'm very concerned that, you know, regular folks who have to work at their job during the day would not be able to mow their lawn or work on their house in the hours that they're not working somewhere else. So is this restricted only to commercial activity or does it apply to noise generated by anybody in the construction or landscaping practices?
It, it would be by anybody making noise, not just commercial ventures.
It would apply to anybody. I mean, we're, we're, this is still under review and that was a point of mine.
So, so I would either suggest that it be limited to commercial activity or that you get a lot of input from regular folks as to how this would affect them and, and what their options would be if they have a job to work at and a home to take care of.
Thank you, Mary. Carl, did you have another comment?
Yes, Carl Lindvall. Through you, Madam Moderator, to...
Chair.
Or, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm so used to it.
And it's Hill, not Gibson.
Pardon me. Through you, Chair Select Board Member. I, to Ms. Greenberg, I'm a part of a lot of the organizations you say you've reached out to and my first knowing of this article was through Nantucket Current. So even though you, you may have spent some, some quality time reaching out, I'm, I'm a part of at least three of the organizations you mentioned and I've received nothing. That's one part. The other part is to, to echo what Mary said, I don't pay a landscaper to work on my house. I mow my own lawn. I typically mow it on Sunday mornings. So I'm not really comfortable with shortening the, the bylaw on, on noise. And again, this is really, it feels like an opening for more calls to the police station.
Thank you, Carl.
So, so the discussion tonight is not to adopt this. The discussion tonight is whether we put it on the warrant for discussion at town meetings. So this isn't like one and done tonight. I just want people to be clear on that as well.
And this is the third, sorry, this is the third of, fourth time, public meeting that we've had on this. And so we're doing, and it's changing and, you know, so we're doing it and the proponents are doing it. This is, you know, we're trying to do it the right way. All right, sorry.
Campbell Sutton.
Good evening, Campbell Sutton. Sorry, I wasn't going to say anything, but with Mary's question, I do all of my own home repair and mowing and everything. I personally think you should move something like this forward to town meeting and let everybody have some input as to whether it passes or not. I typically wait until 10 o'clock on a Sunday just to be nice to neighbors. And I think that's one of the things that I really noticed during the summer, right, is people can't even get up, you know, that they're just here for a week or a month or whatever, they can't even get up and just enjoy a, you know, a leisurely cup of coffee on their porch because, you know, their neighborhood, especially Brant Point, is cacophonous with noise and you just can't get away from it. So I, I do think regarding others is, is important as well, but I did appreciate the carve-out for Sunday because that's really the only time I have to do that kind of stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. So this is gathering input.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes, Carol.
The gentleman who just spoke, I didn't catch his name and what organizations he belongs to because I'd be curious to know.
His name is Carl Lindvall and I'm not sure which organizations he was referring to, but I can get you his contact information.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that we have discussed homeowners because they do work and need to, to do their landscaping as people have spoken. So that would take care of the Sunday, the 12 o'clock. I don't know if people get home at 6 o'clock and start mowing the lawn, but we also discussed that there are quiet things that you could do before or after the, the proposal. Landscapers are doing their weeding or planting or deadheading, raking, and quiet noise for landscape, for construction, this painting, electric and plumbing inside, that's not noisy work. So that obviously can continue. Anyway, thank you so much for this consideration and for everybody's input.
Thank, thank you, Carol. And I mean, just to note that this board can grant a waiver for special circumstances, which we've done for Bartlett Tree Experts for a number of summer seasons, so they are not in the way of people being able to get around.
I would say, if I may, I would say, I understand the deliveries of plant material. Happens to be a family business and, and yeah, sometimes you're just, yeah, they do a Sunday turnaround. So I, I think maybe a carve-out for, for delivery, something along that line or, or the ability for when that happens, that there be just a notification process or something that the, that you call into the police department and say, hey, my truck got delayed. You know, not necessarily needing to grant permission, but a notification for, for common but not always exceptions or something along that line. It's something to consider.
And it was good that so many people have, are here tonight to talk about this because it's, as we know, it's not the best method to hash all of this out at town meeting. Can we move?
Yeah, one last thing. I would encourage people who are listening tonight, who are just, you know, catching wind of this. I mean, we did ask Carol to do this intentionally and do the letters to the editor and do the outreach to make sure that everybody knew we were going to have this conversation. So if anybody's just catching on now, I suggest that, you know, submit letters to the, to the town manager email. This isn't done tonight and so we can carve out some changes or do some amendments to what's proposed before we adopt it for the warrant. That's the whole point of this. So thanks, everybody.
And I think, I look at it as a balancing act. You know, we've got to, you know, we've got to look, we've got to balance it so that we're, you know, we're building and maintaining, but we're also a tourist economy with people coming to stay. And so, you know, we've got to find a way that people are respectful and it works. And I, and I think it's, you know, I'm happy, I would like to see it go to town meeting and I hope it doesn't get, you know, I hope it ends up balanced and reasonable when we're done. So, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so a few more updates on warrant articles from your last meeting. There's a, yes, this sheet in the packet. So just a couple of things here. We have been talking, maybe I'll just wait a second. We've been talking a bit about e-bikes, e-scooters and how to better regulate those and the chief has been working on this. And I think the idea here is that at some point soon, where did she go? Okay. In, in an event, at some point soon, she's going to come in and give you an update on what, what is happening with enforcement of e-bike riding and the types of e-bikes that we are focusing on. And there is pending legislation at the state level that most likely will help us address this in a, in a better way. And we're, by the time we get to town meeting, the hope is that that legislation will perhaps have been enacted. So hopefully we'll get an update on that when our legislators come to visit us sometime in the next month or so. The noise bylaw we just talked about, home rule petitions, that's been revised just a little bit and as, as we know, most of those do not need to be resubmitted to the 2026 annual town meeting. We had talked about a couple of other home rule petitions, e-bikes. I think we, I think early on we were thinking we should just submit our own so that we can somehow express to the state that some control needs to be exerted here. And I think we've just determined that we're not quite ready to do that yet. Chief, do you want to, I forgot already when we talked earlier today, if you were going to give the e-bike update now, was it now?
I would be happy to.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, well, hello, Jody Casper, Chief of Police, just talking a little bit about e-bikes. I know, I think we all agree, this has been an ongoing community concern for everyone who's been witnessing everything on our roadways right now, both on our multi-use paths and on our regular roads. We've seen a lot of behavior out there that's pretty concerning. We, as a police department, have responded to a lot of medical calls, bicycles that have hit people, that have hit cars. So very concerned about the conditions on the roads right now related to bicycling all over the island. And much like you said before, Matt, everything's a balancing act. You know, we're really trying to, of course, we value people not in cars that are on bicycles that are reducing traffic, but also wanting to make sure that people are being safe when they're operating. So we've been in the midst this week of just training our staff on some e-bike enforcement options and I think the best message for the community to understand is that e-bikes under mass general law are defined as things that don't go more than 20 miles an hour. There is a class three e-bike, which you may have heard about, and that's something that can be throttled up to 28 miles an hour, but that is not in the mass general law definitions of an e-bike. So that is why, though, anything going over 20 falls into a different class, requires a driver's license, which means that anyone under the age of 16 shouldn't be on anything that goes more than 20 miles an hour. So this is probably some new news for members of our community and certainly may have an impact, but it's an impact probably that we will want to see. We, we all witness what's going on out there. I view, view it as incredibly dangerous. So that is the message to our community, things that we'll be looking for is if you're going over 20 miles an hour, you're on something that can't be on the multi-use paths and that you can't be under 16 years old because you need a driver's license to be on anything that's going faster. Also, everybody needs to wear a helmet. There's a bylaw in Nantucket for bicyclists to be wearing helmets, so we'll be out there enforcing that as well. And you can't have double riders on things with two wheels that don't have two seats. It's the best way to describe that. So we're just going through some, excuse me, different training with our staff. We will be out in strategic areas where it's safe to stop people. We want to be very careful when we're doing any sort of enforcement activities that we're not contributing to any sort of dangerous situation. It's tricky to be in a car or whatever we're going to be doing to try to stop someone on a bicyclist in a safe way. So we'll be in some strategic areas, really emphasizing education, letting people know first that they're on something that they shouldn't be on or can't be on. We may have to be contacting some parents, you know, if we're stopping kids that are on their way to school on something that's going 40 miles an hour, they can't be on that. So there'll be a little bit of a, you know, bumpy break-in period as people learn about what they're on. And I think it's confusing from companies that have branded something as an e-bike. It's sold, it's called an e-bike when you buy it, maybe that's what the box says, but the reality is that's not what the law says in Massachusetts. Will it change in the future? It may, but right now, that's what the law is in Massachusetts. That's what we'll be enforcing in the best interest of safety for all of us. I'm happy to answer any questions on e-bikes if you want.
I am hugely relieved to know that there is a law that says a 14-year-old riding a bike that has a throttle that can fly down the road is not allowed and that we have the law behind us already. and that we have the law behind us already. I didn't know that, and thank you for that clarification. And I will repeat it again. Unlicensed individuals who do not have a driver's license cannot be on one of these throttle-driven, two-wheel vehicles.
That goes over 20 miles an hour.
Over 20 miles an hour.
Yes.
And so to all the parents out there listening who, whose kids are out there, that we're all observing, please know there's a risk of enforcement here. Never mind your kid's safety, but that the police are going to be chatting with them about it. And I think it's really, really important. Thank you.
Yes, yep. They fall into other classes like motorized bikes, scooters, and even motorcycles. That's the classes that they fall into that require licensure and sometimes even registration. As I said, the law may change in Boston. We'll keep an eye on what state's putting out and how they're evaluating different types of two-wheeled devices. We'll reevaluate next year if the laws change. But for now, this is what they are.
I have a question. What, where do you, where does the small scooters, the motorized scooters with the small wheels that you look, the board and you stand on?
The like one-wheels, I believe they're called.
Yeah, they've got two wheels, front and back.
Those would fall probably under motorized scooter. It depends how fast they go.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because that was the, that is the one that I was asking my employees this summer, and they work at other places too. And I was asked, every single kid who rode those for this summer, every single kid who rode them, every single one that they knew had fallen off and had, you know, had at least gotten stitches or bumps and bruises, and some got a lot more. So those, because of our roads are sandy and there's little, you know, and the wheels are so small. And then one of the guys, a Bulgarian employee of mine who rode one our last summer, he got pretty hurt at the end of the summer, and he stopped riding it. And he described it as, you're a carrot. You know, you're upright and your weight is up here and there's these tiny wheels and you hit something and it goes right up from under you. And so that was pretty eye-opening to me because, you know, we had some issues, as you've heard. And I sort of started looking into it. And it was pretty amazing to me. That's the one that I'm most worried about at this point of all of them. But anyway.
Any other questions?
Oh. Sorry. Charity Benz?
Thank you. We all attended, or many of us did, annual special town meeting last night. And the urgency of passing Article 1 is based upon the stability of our tourist economy. These last two discussions about disrupting the sleep time of people who come and pay thousands of dollars a night as part of our tourist attraction and then have to be fearful about even being on a bike path to walk it or run the risk of being injured. I think these are two very, very serious issues that if they are not managed, can lead to the detriment of the island's attractiveness. So I, anything you can do to fix either one of those, I think, is pretty important. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I think that's what we are discussing.
And we are still waiting to hear back. On the last year at the special town meeting, the 20 mile per hour speed limit on multi-use paths also passed. And we are waiting to have that finalized and hear back from Boston on that one. And we'll be able to enforce that as well. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief Casper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so that was, that was home rule petitions. Nothing, nothing else really changed there. The real estate office does have several articles. Those are still being finalized. I should note that, well, I'll get to that in one second. Housing had a couple of articles. And the board had some discussion at your October 15th meeting about the rules that are written for the good landlord exemption and the financial impact. I'm not sure they've finished that yet. So that's coming. And financial and/or ballot questions. So there are several questions listed there. They're all going through the Capitol, the Capitol Program Committee process. The Island Home is, it's kind of a big question mark right now. Our survey closed on October 31st. We have several items that the board wanted more information on following the annual town meeting. And we are working on a presentation to give to you probably sometime in early December. We're having a meeting about getting the presentation ready next week. And the Somerset Needs Area Sewer Extension Construction Appropriation. We are also having an internal meeting on that. There's been some discussion about putting that out a year. There, there could be some financial implications to that with respect to the SRF Fund, State Revolving Loan Fund, and just the general uptick in construction costs when things are put off. We also, though, do have some concern about outreach on this project. It really hasn't started yet. And it is going to impact a lot of people who are going to need to provide easements for the sewer connections and understand about the project. And there's also, you know, we're trying to link it up with the Somerset Lane Bike Path, which is not, that design is not even complete yet. So we have, we have some work to do on it, but we're a little worried about how it's all going to come together quickly enough because it's a big, big project to manage. So more on that as we go.
I thought during the strategic plan, we pretty much decided it wasn't going to this annual town meeting.
I think that you may have, but we want, at that time, we didn't know what the financial impacts might be. So we want you to understand that.
Okay.
We added a tax title revolving fund article because of the new tax title laws that were enacted by the Commonwealth earlier this year. And I think that was it for updates. You'll have another one of these possibly next week or definitely the week after.
Anything else on that? Okay, are there any select board committee reports? Then we are going to move to the public hearing this evening, which is to consider the appeal of the Nantucket Preservation Trust of the Historic District Commission approval of Certificate of Appropriativeness Number HDC 2025-01-11863 to demolish a structure located at 10 New Whale Street. This was continued from October 1st, 2025. There's some procedures under the appeals. The appeal to the select board concerns the HDC decision is not a new hearing of the matter already heard by the HDC. No new information can be brought forth during the appeal process before the select board. Any information not previously submitted to the HDC will not be allowed. The chairman will open the public hearing and may outline the procedure to be followed, including the time allotment for the statements and the rebuttals. The appellant will state his or her case and the reason for the appeal. I'm going to call an HDC meeting. I'm going to give it to you to call a meeting to order in one second. The Historic District Commission defines its position. Rebutts follow. Public comment may be taken, although any separate interest that may be expressed will not become part of the argument. The chairman will invite questions from the board and will close the public hearing. Then the board will make a decision or may take the matter under advisement. A written decision will be prepared for the board's signature. And I will turn it over to Stephen Welch to call an HDC meeting to order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Stephen Welch serves as the HDC chairperson. And I'll call this meeting the HDC to order. Thanks, but.
Do we have a quorum of the Nantucket Historical Commission? Okay. And nobody intending to come online and speak that would constitute a quorum? Just want to make sure. And do we have George Pucci online as town council and John Georgio? And the public hearing is now open? And Mary Bergman?
Thanks for the chance to speak before you tonight. I'm Mary Bergman, the Executive Director of the Nantucket Preservation Trust. 10 New Whale Street, which was built in 1927, is a contributing structure to the Nantucket National Historic Landmark District. And 10 New Whale Street is unique in that it is one of the only surviving buildings that tells the story of Nantucket's changing industrial waterfront. The HDC's approval of the demolition of this building is detrimental to the public interest. Section 6 of the HDC's Enabling Legislation states that the HDC is empowered to refuse the issuance of a demolition permit for buildings, quote, "for building," for any building or structure of such architectural or historic interest, the removal of which is in the opinion of said commission would be detrimental to the public interests of the town of Nantucket. HDC Vice Chair Ray Poll indicated he believed 10 New Whale Street to be a structure whose cultural and architectural heritage was worthy of preservation as stated in October 29, 2024 HDC meeting. Quote, "I feel like we're reviewing a demolition for one of the three bricks, honestly. It's a blue-collar version of one of the three bricks. This building, for so many reasons, its material, its shape, its location, all of that. It is so rich with meaning in terms of that downtown area. So I could never, never vote in favor of a demolition of this building." Notwithstanding these comments, on July 8th, decision, chair, excuse me, vice chair, former chair, vice chair Poll reversed his course on July 8th, claiming that the building could not practically be restored. Raising without further delay, the HDC proceeded to vote to demolish 10 New Whale Street building. And that was a three to two vote. Mr. Poll and Ms. Oliver, Mr. Welch in favor of the demolition. But there are several procedural and substantive errors that render the HDC's decision arbitrary and capricious. Allowing the removal of 10 New Whale Street further erodes the integrity of the Nantucket National Historic Landmark. Ultimately, the major issue with this decision is that the demolition policy, as described in Building with Nantucket in Mind on pages 20 and 22 in Appendix C, were not followed. And when there is a demolition application, according to Building with Nantucket in Mind, there should be a hearing to reach a determination to consider if the structure is protected and/or significant and/or contributing structure. As all of these terms are defined in Building with Nantucket in Mind, we heard Paul even reference contributing structures tonight when he was talking about some of the structures down at the beach. If a building is historic and preserving it is in the public's best interest, end of story. It should not be demolished. If a building does not rise to that level, then demolition can be considered. But without determining the significance of a structure, any other decision made after that is arbitrary. It is driving blindly without a roadmap. Therefore, determining the significance of a structure is so important that, excuse me, determining the significance of a structure is so important, in fact, that a March 8th, 2023 appeal of a renovations to a structure located at Two Stone Alley or a similar procedural error was made by the HDC. And no determine was made on the significance of that structure. This select board remanded the decision back to the HDC to clarify whether Two Stone Alley was a contributing structure or an individually significant structure. Select Board member Brooke Morris said at the time, quote, "What I want for them is to go back, determine whether or not this is an individually significant historical structure, state that they know that it is or isn't, and review their decision through that lens." Current Chair Dawn Hill said at the time, "I'm basing this, I'm not basing this decision on arbitrary and capricious. I'm basing it on the HDC's lack, excuse me, I'm basing it on the lack of the HDC identifying that they were considering it as an individually significant and what features were important to be kept and how it was reviewed." Much of the HDC's rebuttal of NPT's appeal rests on the belief that they do not have to follow their own guidebook, Building with Nantucket in Mind. The HDC claims that Building with Nantucket in Mind is not a bylaw nor a regulation and that the HDC need only follow the town's bylaws and the HDC Special Act and the minimum maintenance bylaw. This is the HDC's strange justification as to why the HDC did not consider the existing demolition policy with Building Nantucket in Mind and, quote, "hold a public hearing on the application" as dictated in page 21 of the guidebook. This is the HDC's answers to why they did not determine that the structure was significant or protected or contributing to Nantucket's National Historic Landmark, the highest distinction. The HDC Special Act does state that the commission shall make and publish rules and regulations adopting or establishing guidelines for the exterior architectural features and establishing procedures for the processing of applications and conduct of hearings. Building with Nantucket in Mind contains those regulations and those rules and regulations for exterior architectural features and establishing procedures. The demolition policy within Building with Nantucket in Mind is the procedure for processing demolition applications. If the HDC is following the Special Act, then they should be following the procedures, the rules, the guidelines that exist within Building with Nantucket in Mind. Otherwise, then there are no procedures being followed. And if there are no procedures without following rules and regulations, how can a decision be anything other than arbitrary? So I urge the select board to vacate the HDC's decision to demolish 10 New Whale Street and to remand this matter back to the HDC, ensuring a real public hearing be held as described within these demolition policies that are in Building with Nantucket in Mind.
Hi, I'm Kathy Flynn, Land use specialist for the town in Nantucket. The HDC's response to the appeal is on pages 112 to 114 of your pack. And I hope you all had a chance to read it. The first page of this letter summarizes the 257 pages of documents and roughly two hours and 45 minutes of video covering three meetings, March 18th, June 10th, and July 8th. What I'd like to emphasize is that the October 29th, 2024 application NPT is referring to in the appeal letter is not the COA that's before you tonight for the appeal. The October application from last year is the same application with same scope of work, a demolition. However, it had a fraction of the information compared to this application and was subsequently withdrawn. This is important to note because the commissioners who voted in favor of this demolition based their decision on verbal testimony and documentation of that application. Furthermore, both engineers based their reports on a physical inspection conducted of the structure. Those inspections detailed the current condition of the materials of this brick building, not any other brick building. Why is that important? Excuse me. Because the Nantucket Historic District Commission is a regulatory board. Like the planning board and the ZBA, the HDC reviews applications on their individual merits. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else from the Historic District Commission ready to define their position? Oh. Well, that'll be a rebuttal. Is Arthur Reed a rebuttal, I'm assuming?
Yes, if I may, you ready to hear from me?
Hold on, Arthur. So Arthur represents National Grid.
Okay.
So this is technically between the HDC and the NPT. I mean, I think he can talk under public comment?
Okay. Okay.
And if we have questions of either side, when do we ask those? Today?
Well, the HDC is going to finish defining their position.
Okay.
And then rebuttals can follow from NPT.
And then we can ask them to.
And then we can ask questions, take public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening, again.
Sorry, caught me getting yawned. Sorry, it's late. So I just want to get a clarification, if I may, through you, Madam Chair, through the town's attorney. What materials and information form the basis of your review and determination this evening?
George, would you like to respond to that?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is George Pucci from Town Council's office. I didn't hear the question, Dawn.
I'll repeat it if you'd like. What materials and information form the basis of the select board's review and determinations this evening?
The information that's in the packet and anything that comes out of this public hearing.
So information in the packet pertaining, information in the, of the minutes of the meeting and the COA and so on and so forth? Or the information provided by the public or the person who's challenging the appeal? I just want to get some clarity.
All of that.
Okay, thank you. So the HDC, as Kathy Flynn, I think, very succinctly stated, performed a very thorough review. This is a structure that is literally crumbling. It has been crumbling for decades, unfortunately. It would have been wonderful for someone to stand up and evoke the demolition delay town bylaw years ago, perhaps 25 years ago, when that structure. engineer trained in preservation, as voted by the group, as recommended by NPT and others, to establish services through these individuals or an individual who is so qualified, and not only to establish services through an individual so qualified, but to not challenge the report was the vote of the Commission. Subsequently, in the 11th hour, a report was submitted challenging the report that we agreed we weren't going to allow to be challenged, and it has been cited widely as the basis for the, that the HDC had shut down discussion, which is just factually incorrect. We proceeded through our hearing in an orderly manner. We reviewed the information. We reviewed information from two engineers, if not more, other experts. We concluded de facto that this is not a significant structure, that it is not a protected structure, because we voted to have it be demolished. Now, part of the reason I want to get back to quickly, we voted to have it be demolished, at least in my mind, and it's supported in the minutes, I believe, and if it's not supported in the minutes, it's supported on the tape, is that there was no way, there was no way to restore a building that is literally crumbling from the inside of the material that constitutes the structure. And what I mean by that is the brick itself is crumbling. So is the mortar, all the joints, the foundation of the structure. So restoration isn't possible. Replication is possible, but that's not what the HDC was voting on. HDC voted. We voted by virtue of the fact that we voted as we did that this was not a protected structure. It is not an individually significant structure. We voted based upon the professional engineer's information, again, two different engineers. We think it was a good decision. We don't think it was a good decision in that it was a decision we wanted to make. We don't think it was a good decision and we took joy in making it, but we think it was a valid decision based upon information and proper deliberation. Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear. The, for our members and for the public, the HDC voted that some time ago, as one of its best practices that I brought to the group, I believe that there would be a spokesperson, and I believe that is the Chair or the Vice Chair and that person instead, obviously not to shut down anyone who's here to speak tonight. But if there's, if a member is going to speak contrary to the vote of the majority, they need to clarify they are not speaking as a member of the HDC, and they are not speaking on the HDC's time. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
I'm not sure that it would be appropriate. I can ask George for there to be a minority report from a board that's voted.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that that would follow.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I guess I could say it more succinctly, taking your lead. The HDC has specifically not authorized minority reports.
Thank you.
But hang on, so just so I'm clear. So if somebody feels strongly that it's a 3 to 2 vote, and someone feels strong on the other side, they can speak as an individual still, correct? Okay, so they can get up and say, "I'm an HDC member, I'm speaking as an individual." Okay, I want to make sure.
I would be personally aggrieved, but, I mean, that's up to anyone who, how they want to hold their ethics, but it would need to be like, be a direct abutterer within a certain proximity to be personally aggrieved, not as an HDC member. There's specific rules for minority reports, and they're not generally on five-member boards. But George, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I think you'd be okay having it as a individual speaking just to, you know, describe the basis for their vote against. If you have regulations that govern the HDC, I've never seen this come up before, that it violates them from speaking if they were in the minority. I know that you do have material in front of you from the, from the preservation planner that oppose the grant of the demolition, so you already have some of that minority material before you. So it would be difficult to, I would always err on the side if somebody wanted to speak up, to let them speak.
Okay, well, the person at the mic's not in the minority anyway.
So quick question, though, but would the minority person speak under public comment or as part of the HDC?
That is a very good point. I would have that come in in public comment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Me, I'd hate to, but I just want to clarify, and this is to make the point not to be pointed. The preservation planner, whose work we greatly appreciate, is not a member of the HDC, nor was the preservation planner's role ever voted by the HDC. The information is, we received staff, much as the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, staff-based information from professional staff, and as elected officials, we review it. But I want to be clear that there is not an official role that's ever been voted as a policy matter by the HDC with respect to the preservation planner. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, no, you're not, you voted in favor.
Yes, I did. Val Oliver. I didn't, I did not vote in favor, I did vote in favor of this demolition, but it wasn't without a great deal of forethought. I was, and I'm still frustrated that it was left in a neglected state for so long, and there are no repercussions on the table for that purposeful disregard of this structure. National Grid has not proven that they adhere to the propaganda on their website about partnering with communities they serve, and unfortunately, the lack of any work on this building led to the decompensation of the site and the structure. The building is beyond rehabilitation. We listened to the fire chief and structural engineers, and unfortunately, they stated they would not send anyone in there in the case there was a fire because they're convinced it's going to collapse, and they were not going to risk safety of anybody on their team. The historic documentation actually by the proponents for saving the structure clearly evidenced that the former gas plant and its construction was built with asbestos. The process of gasification described the complexity of the processes that created the gas by using oil, coal, and fuel to manufacture the gas. It begs the question, what is the toxicity of this entire site, not just the building there? What would be saved of all these materials if they had to, brick by brick, take it down, analyze the brick? It just, it doesn't make sense. And that, you know, is a concern. Years back, there was a gas station where the wave is that got under a lot of scrutiny, as did a lot of the gas stations at the time, because the fuel tanks all leaked, and the whole site was considered toxic, and they had to dig everything up and take it off island on barges to get rid of it. And I wonder, this being in such close proximity also with what was going on in the building, but we don't have any of that information to back up how we're feeling or what we're So in 1998, the HDC then approved the demolition of this building with a positive staff recommendation for the approval. According to the Secretary of Interior Standards, when all other options are exhausted, reconstruction can be a treatment. That is the solution, as I see, to have the building reconstructed as it exists on the exterior, and it can be made into something that is viable in the overall scheme of whatever is going to happen in this redevelopment. There were never any fines imposed. I suggested this when we were getting ready to vote. If this building in and of itself is not able to be saved, we should ask them to recreate it in the overall development. And unfortunately, we're famous for coming up with fines and regulations and never following through with them, or we're not allowed to impose them, so that's opening a door for a whole other discussion sometime about indifference to old buildings and demo by neglect. But in this case, it was not callously decided. There were several meetings. We had information from many different players, and I feel we made the best decision we could on the information we had and for the safety of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And I mean, just so we're clear, as we continue to discuss this, and I'll allow a rebuttal before we go to other comments, is our decision is whether the HDC acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner, or there was a true procedural defect. We do not substitute our personal feelings for the decision of another regulatory board.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, to rebut some of the topics that came up. It was mentioned that the October 29th meeting should not be able to be taken into consideration. It is exactly the same application to demolish the structure, just as that was the application that was just referenced in 1998. So if we're not going to think about October, six months ago, we shouldn't be thinking about 1998 either. I wish, I was 13, 25 years ago, so I'm sorry about that. But lastly, I would like to highlight that the HDC's defense of much of, much of the HDC's defense of their decision to demolish Ten New Whale Street seems to lie in the belief of some of the commissioners, as you just heard, that it would be impractical to restore the structure. Much of the concern has to do with the current condition of the structure, a condition brought about by years of neglect by the applicant and prior owners. The HDC, in the letter from Ms. Flynn earlier today, or that was in the packet, states that the HDC follows the minimum maintenance bylaw. That has come up a few times. The HDC sends the minimum, sends those minimum maintenance bylaw violations. They failed to issue a minimum maintenance violation until December 2024, although the building had been neglected for nearly 30 years by that point. And what was the applicant's response to getting that violation, applying yet again to demolish this building? So why do we have a minimum maintenance bylaw if there are no consequences for failing to follow it? If the condition is the big thing, there was absolutely nothing done to ensure that that condition would be brought up to code. The HDC is not a commission that was established to determine what is practical or what is impractical. I think building an 8,000-square-foot home is impractical. It is a commission that was established to protect and preserve Nantucket's historic buildings, places and districts of interest. I am worried that the HDC today would consider rebuilding the oldest house struck by lightning in 1987, or reconstructing Great Point Light, which was reduced to rubble in 1984, as too impractical an undertaking to take, to undertake. I urge the Select Board again to vacate the HDC's decision to demolish Ten New Whale Street and to remand the matter back to the HDC. We have a procedure that could be followed. I don't know why we cease to follow it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick clarifications. One, the HDC did consider a mandate to reconstruct the structure after its demolition. We realize that that's not our purview. We can't make someone build a new structure. We can rule on the structure that's before us, whether it's to be constructed, what the architecture elements are that are appropriate for the character and setting, whether a move-off or a demolition is appropriate based upon the individual circumstances of the structure, which brings us to this structure. The HDC's determination was that the structure was, could be demolished, could be, was approved to be demolished based upon all of the circumstances, the totality of the situation. We didn't get into, although Commissioner Oliver mentioned things like pollutants and so on and so forth, we, that wasn't part of our deliberation. So I just want to be clear on that. And also, you know, the HDC, blending the HDC's, there seems to be some blending of the HDC's desire to preserve structures, to consider all the different variables. We have, we sit, much as you do, and we primarily have to listen to what's presented to us. So such things as the condition of the materials is certainly one of the things we have to consider and listen to. Comparing 1998 to a 2024 application is something individual commissioners may have considered, but we, at least I, and I believe from discussion at the table, consider the merits of the application we represented through lengthy and thorough deliberation, and we ask that you uphold our decision. The HDC isn't on trial here. The minimum maintenance bylaw isn't on trial here, and we think we did our due diligence. Thank you. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you want me to go to public? Or did anyone want to ask a question?
I have a question for Mr. Pucci, if I could.
Sure.
In a situation like this, where the, say the HDC did, and I'm not submitting, I'm not saying they did, but if they wanted to say, "Yeah, this building is too far gone, but we want you to, you know, replicate that again," could they make that as a condition? You know, "If you're going to do this in the future, we want this back," is that something that you can't ask for?
Not, not really in the context of them seeking a demolition permit. It could, it could come into the consideration of if the structure can be saved. You know, so the, the preference on island, obviously, is not to, you know, have a replica of something. But if enough of that structure can be saved, and there's information in the record about this, if enough of it can be saved, that could potentially give the Commission grounds to deny the demolition permit, because they would say, "Well, we want a plan for restoration of this building." That you don't rip it down and put up a replica, but you see what can be saved, and you work, and you come back, and you come up with a plan, and we are denying your application to raise the building, and here's the reason that we're denying it, because we think it can be saved for X, Y, Z reasons, and we want you to come back with a plan. That would be perfectly within their jurisdiction. But I think that it would be beyond their jurisdiction if they were to grant the demolition of the building within conditions of how the property owner has to use their property. That would be incorrect.
I got you. All right, thank you.
Thanks, George. I'm going to go to public, and Arthur Reed has had his hand up for a while.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Arthur Reed, I'm the attorney representing the property owner and Nantucket Electric Company, the applicant in this matter, the appellee. And I want to, first of all, start out by reminding everyone that this is, in fact, an appeal, not a new fact-finding hearing by the Select Board. The appeal procedure, as promulgated and as published by the Select Board, reinforces that fact, specifically providing that no new information may be brought forth during the appeal process before the Select Board. And information not previously submitted, that is not submitted at the time of the HDC proceedings, to the HDC can be allowed to be presented or taken into consideration. The, is our position that anything that's been inserted into the record after the HDC proceeding, in other words, the materials that the HDC has submitted to you, which comprise the greater part of the record before you, are obviously appropriate for you to consider. Any materials submitted after that, including letters that have been submitted, that include material that is not contained in the public record that was submitted to the HDC, including the letters both for and against that have been submitted subsequently, should not be considered. It is our position that Nantucket Preservation Trust has no standing to appeal in this matter. Now, under the statute, under the HDC statute, the appellant must be an aggrieved person, any person aggrieved. Now, person aggrieved does not simply mean a person who is unhappy about the decision that was made by the HDC. There is case law involving other types of regulatory proceedings in Massachusetts, and in fact, it's general throughout the country that and in fact, it's general throughout the country that, in the context of land use controversy, that an aggrieved person is someone who has a specific property or business interest that is affected by the proceedings, not just a matter of wanting to speak as a member of the public to contest the decision of the body that has made that decision. Persons doing that are described as being private attorneys general, and are stepping in and attempting to fill the role that is, in fact, the role of the body that's making the decision. That body is charged with and has, in the course of making their decision, taken care of the point of dealing with the protection of the public interest. In fact, they are acknowledging that they are attempting to be the guardian of the historic district of Nantucket. In fact, the HDC is the guardian of the historic district of Nantucket, not the Preservation Trust, which is a private organization that has no standing in, under the applicable case law. And as to the status of building with Nantucket in mind, as it affects the decisions and deliberations of the HDC, that is only a guideline. It has never been adopted as an official rule or regulation by the HDC, and there is no, it has no status as a regulation, or obviously as a statute governing their deliberations. Rather, they make the decision, they can look at the guidelines in building with Nantucket in mind, they can look at any other material that's submitted to them, but the HDC is responsible to make the decision, as they did in this case. And I would comment that, once again, the standard is whether they operated in an arbitrary or capricious manner, or in violation of the law, and I would respectfully submit that there's absolutely no basis under which the select board could find that the HDC acted, in this case, in an arbitrary and capricious manner. They held multiple hearings over a period of several months. Evidence was submitted, as has been already mentioned, by the engineer engaged by our client, to the effect that the building was in a dangerous condition, presented a public hazard, and was not susceptible to rehabilitation. The HDC requested us to provide evidence from another qualified expert registered with Preservation Massachusetts. And we did so. We engaged another engineer who was on their qualified list, who looked at the building and whose conclusion was, yes, you could, you could rebuild the building, you could put in new materials, and by the time you get through, it's not going to be the same building. It's going to be a replication of the building, not an old building that's been rehabilitated. Because the existing materials in the building, as came out in all the evidence, are such that they were deteriorating almost from the time that the building was built. The quality of the brick, of the built, of the brick was not such as to stand the tests of time in a, in the Nantucket environment, near the water, with, with water, with wind, and specifically with the operation of the building, which was gasification, production of gas from coal through chemical processes. And that resulted in the deterioration of the brick, which was of substandard quality in the first place. So that what's there right now is in a decrepit, deteriorated condition as a result of all of those circumstances, not as a result specifically of any neglect by the owner, but rather the inherent defect of the, of the brick. And that all came out and was submitted to and presented to the HDC, and they took into consideration all that material in making their decision, as well as the testimony from the fire department, to the effect that the building should be demolished, that it was dangerous, that they could not, in good conscience, send firefighters into the building, and at the risk of their life, with the likelihood of collapse, as well as potential danger from the, from the residue materials that were in the bricks. The, I would point out that one member of the HDC who sat on this, Commissioner McLeod, is a board member of NPT, and as such, and was throughout the whole process. It was known from the previous proceeding, which has been alluded to, although it's not part of the evidence here and shouldn't be, but in the letter that was submitted recently by NPT, they included a copy of a letter that they submitted in October of last year, from which it was clear that they had a position on this project, which was contrary to that of the applicant. And I would respectfully submit that since Commissioner McLeod is a board member of that organization, he should not have, he should not have participated in the proceedings. He voted in the minority, so at this point, as to the decision, it doesn't make any difference. But he should not be involved in any way in these proceedings.
Well, again, one else.
In short, I think that the HDC's decision is clearly not arbitrary and capricious, should be upheld. If you have any other question about any of this, please let me know, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brooke?
I would just wonder if Mr. Pucci could comment on Mr. Reed's statement that Preservation Trust is not, does not have standing?
Definitely, I agree with Attorney Reed, as a concept from a land use permitting perspective, typically, a appellant needs to have a particularized injury. You know, that's specific and individual compared to the interests of the community at large. Here, however, you don't have case law directly on point on the HDC legislation, on the appeals to you of HDC decisions. You know, your situation is a little bit unique there. So in my opinion, you don't have any case law compelling you to find that the Preservation Trust lacks standing to bring this appeal before you. I would point out, too, you know, the select board has always erred on the side of hearing appellants, and trying to reach a substantive decision on the, on the appeal, versus telling an appellant that they don't have standing to come before you with an appeal. So while I definitely think that, you know, in the event that this was in court, the argument would be made on the other side, that the appellant lacks standing, but that would be a decision for the court to make, and in my opinion, there is not direct case law compelling that result, that you find that the Preservation Trust lacks standing to bring this appeal before you. So I, my recommendation would be to hear the, hear and act on the appeal on a substantive basis, rather than denying it for lack of standing.
Thank you, George. Brooke?
I have a process question through you to Mr. Pucci as well. There's a lot of folks who want to speak on this tonight, but I want to be clear, I can't make a, we, I want to ask, but it's sort of a rhetorical question, in a way, that how people feel about this building, or how they value this building, or how they don't want to see it lost from, you know, that's not what we're here, we don't have any, that's not what we need to base our decision on. So I just want to manage people's expectations in terms of the public input part of this. And also, we, is, I want, what Don said, it's either a procedural error, or arbitrary and capricious, and we should, I encourage people to speak to those particular questions, not the value of the building, and so on and so forth. These are procedural things we're deciding on.
And just, I guess, a couple of questions for Mr. Pucci. It seems, what I heard was that if, that they, that HDC doesn't have to vote for, they don't have to determine the significance, because if they vote to get rid of it, then it means it's not significant. And I heard the, you know, the lawyer for the people who like to, for National Grid, I hear him saying, well, you know, anything they do is, you know, is in the public interest, and they don't have to follow the guidelines, they're guidelines. And so anything they do is in the public interest. I find it, I kind of find that sort of difficult to understand, because it seems to be, it seems circular, that we can do whatever we want, and whatever we want is right, and if we don't follow the guidelines, that's okay, because we're still, we're representing the public. And so it just, I, so how do I, how do I square with, am I missing something, George?
No, you could, you could find the significance of the building to be a relevant factor if you feel that the commission, if there's evidence in the record that you feel that the commission didn't properly take into account the importance of the building from a historical perspective, and whether they failed to properly consider all the evidence in the record, as to whether, in fact, that did have to be demolished in its entirety. So that would be a relevant consideration for you. The issue of the guidelines, Attorney Reed is exactly correct. They are not regulations. That, you know, the, the, under the statute, the HDC does have the jurisdiction to enact regulations. They have never done so. They do not have specific regulations governing their conduct. However, Building with Nantucket in Mind is formally published guidelines that are publicly noticed, and on the HDC's website, that they are the official guidelines for the HDC to follow when they determine whether something is, should receive a certificate of appropriateness or not, or whether demolition of a building or a structure is in the public interest. So, you know, again, in my opinion, and I'm not saying that you have to find this, but if you found compelling evidence that you, a select board member hearing this appeal, found that the HDC failed to follow Building with Nantucket in Mind, that could go into a determination as to whether the decision was arbitrary and capricious, from your perspective. It wouldn't be illegal for the commission to have done that. In other words, it wouldn't be contrary to law to say that, well, we're going to make an exception in this case, but you could find it a compelling reason to say, well, you follow the guidelines and all the other applications that come before you, why weren't the guidelines followed here? But that, that again, assumes that there's evidence that the HDC did, in fact, fail to follow the guidelines. But that failure or following or not following Building with Nantucket in Mind, it's definitely an issue of relevance to you in this appeal, because they are formally published guidelines to applicants, that that's going to be standards that the HDC tends to follow, even though that they, even though they fall short of binding legal regulations on the commission.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a few more, if it's all right.
Sure.
Yeah, what, one of the things is, they're, they're saying it's standard, it's, what's the standard for impracticality? You know, the finding here is that it's impractical to, to do this. Is there a standard for that? This is a George question, or an HDC question?
Yeah, that's, I can let the, I'm happy to defer to the HDC how they consider that, but legally, there isn't. There's not a definition or case law to guide them on that. And really, what they want to be looking at is, what is the, you know, what is the actual expert evidence before them, in terms of the condition of the structure? You know, you've come up with that in the building enforcement context as well. If a building inspector says, hey, look, this building is not safe, you need to demolish it, the property owner always has the right to come back with an engineer and saying, no, there's nothing wrong with it, it's not, it's structurally, it has structural integrity, we can do X, Y, Z to shore it up. But I think at that point, you're looking at expert opinion in the record, as to whether the applicant has made a compelling case that this structure in its entirety has to be raised. And, you know, raising a structure is a, is a pretty, you know, it's pretty draconian, because it's everything. It's everything involving the, it's not brick by brick, it's the foundation, it's everything. You know, is that building really in such a state that it has to be demolished, as opposed to restored? And they, really, the only way to look at that is expert testimony in the record. And just one more issue on this, because John very well stated the standard that's before you. You know, you either have to affirm the appeal and overturn the commission's decision, you have to find that they acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner, or contrary to law. And on the issue of arbitrary and capricious, you're looking at whether there's no, no evidence in the record on which a reasonable mind could deem reasonable to support the decision at issue. So it's a pretty tough standard. And, and if there's competing expert testimony on the, on the structural soundness of the structure at issue, the commission is entitled to choose between competing expert opinions that are presented to them on that. But, you know, as long as you find that, you know, they did that in a deliberative manner, and they properly heard all of the evidence that was before them, that's been submitted to you. So hopefully, that, that helps a little bit, and I didn't further confuse it for you.
Did you want to address that question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I understood correctly, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening, I was grabbing notes.
Standard for, standard for impracticality, when you guys are looking at it, and you say, it's impractical to, you know, save any of this, or, you know, it was, was, what was that? And then, and then was there proof from different people, and you chose one? And was that, was there proof that it had to be raised?
Sure, so I'm going to roll them all into one for simplicity. The level of impracticality was that the structure, we were provided compelling, compelling evidence from the applicant's engineer, structural engineer, and then the structural engineer that we agreed, as a commission, to have the applicant's agent hire, that was trained through Preservation Society-type requirements and standards. And both of those reports indicated that the structure was not restorable, and that was based upon the condition of the, what I initially stated, which is the condition of the brick by which this very structure is constructed with. So there was no, there was no way to reconstruct, there was no way to restore that structure based upon the expert testimony. So that's what we based our decision on. May I, I don't know, that this, we have been talking about Appendix C of Building with Nantucket in Mind. There's been some anecdotal discussion about what it means, but what it, what it states, if you all are going to go down that path, I'd really prefer, because this has repercussions for other appeals going forward, hopefully, we don't enjoy being here as much as you don't enjoy having us here. The, the standards for approval is the, is the committee shall not grant approval of a request for demolition of a protected structure. And then it goes on to state hearing requirements. This was not determined to be a protected structure. And again, by virtue of the fact that the HDC approved that it could be demolished, it did not have standing as a protected structure. And if we are going to do ad infinitum rebuttals, I want a chance at that, too, but I hope we don't. But I'm reading you literally the text from Appendix C. But I'm reading you literally the text from Appendix C. That was all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, I'll let you respond to that. Okay, I'm going to take Marissa Pizzi online.
Hi, can the board hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Marissa Pizzi, and I'm in-house legal counsel for National Grid. I have been involved with the, with National Grid's proposed demolition of this building for over a year now, and along with Attorney Reed throughout the HDC proceedings in this matter. And Attorney Reed has, I think, covered most of what I would say, but I did just want to say that I attended all of the HDC hearings that occurred on this matter, and I very much wanted to be there in person tonight, but unfortunately, I'm unable to travel at the, at the moment. And the reason I mention this is simply to let the board members know that this is an incredibly important matter to the company, and the company's priority has been and remains to make this property safe by taking down this building, which, as the record supports, is structurally unsound, presents a risk to public safety, as has been said and has, has been acknowledged by the fire department, and is not suitable for restoration based on the opinion of not one but two experts. I would add that two experts who are in the unique position of having performed an in-person inspection of the building. And as also has been mentioned, I just want to emphasize that in the fire department's correspondence that is part of the record in this matter, and that was submitted to the HDC, the fire department itself recommends demolition, given the public safety risks associated with the building. All of that is to say that the record in this matter more than amply supports demolition, and I would urge the select board to not be swayed by public sentiment expressed by those who may not agree with the HDC's decision. One other thing I'd like to mention that I don't think has been mentioned yet is that this building has been preserved. There is a historic scan, a detailed scan of the exterior and interior of the building, which we had done and was, and is in the record. That, that scan provides not only a historical resource, but also a guidepost for potential future development, all of which would, of course, be before, before the HDC. So I say that to just emphasize that the building is being preserved, and, and I think that's important. And I would just echo what has already been said about the suitability of restoration, and the fact that when we, when we talk about the ability of this building to be restored, I think both experts, it was, it's very clear, if you read those reports, that, that the buildings cannot be restored, but I think, as Mr. Welch noted, it would really be a replication. There would be none of the original fabric that would remain. So it's not a matter of what's practical or impractical, but really what's possible. And if there were to be development at that, at that site at some point in the future, that would go back to the HDC, and the HDC could use the historic scan that has been, has been obtained to, to dictate what anything going on that property would look like. So I thank you for your time, and urge the select board to uphold the HDC's decision.
Thank you. I have another hand online, Amy Q. Hey.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we are in public comment.
Okay, because?
But the board's been asking questions amongst it.
No, but the people that have been coming in, Mr. Reed and the lady who just spoke, seem to be representing National Grid, taking up quite a bit of time, when people that are right here don't seem to be getting an opportunity to speak. So I just wanted to clear it up, because I was really confused about what you were doing.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to be speak. I'll be brief, and I very much understand the guidelines. My name is Amy Ford Cohane, and my husband and I live at 76 Union Street. We support the NPT's appeal to overturn the HDC's July decision allowing National Grid to demolish the historic structure at 10 New Whale Street. We deeply respect the volunteer service of the HDC members and the difficult balance they must strike. Nonetheless, as outlined in my October 31st letter, this decision was arbitrary and capricious. It disregarded a key question, excluded expert testimony, limited public comment, and involved in this procedural misstep. I'd like to highlight just one critical point, and it's really important. Approximately 50 minutes into the June 10th, 2025 meeting, Commissioner McLeod asked a specific question about the second engineer's report, which was central to understanding the structure's condition. It had to do with the diagram key. The engineer that responded was not the one that prepared the report, and his response began with, I believe. So Commissioner McLeod made it clear, his question remained unanswered. He said, quote, "I would like to hear from the person who did the report," end quote. That consultant was not present. The chair concluded, quote, "That doesn't address Angus's concern, so that's where we are." So the chair, at that time, reinforced on the record that there was an outstanding question by a commissioner. There was ample time for it to be answered, but it was not. Fast forward to the next meeting on July 8th, Commissioner McLeod reiterated, quote, "At our first opportunity to discuss this as a commission, the engineering firm wasn't represented. I had a question that wasn't answered. If these are the only two sources we're using for our decision, I feel it's premature to decide without hearing from that second engineer," end quote. Commissioner McLeod also noted-
Wait, you know that we are in receipt of all of these letters and of the entire record.
Yes.
We have all the minutes, we've read all of the minutes. I just want to make, make sure that people aren't going to be too repetitive.
Okay, I, I just, I heard Commissioner McLeod say-
Commissioner McLeod is here and could probably speak for himself.
Sorry, if I'm being inappropriate, I'll just close by saying his legitimate concern was very acknowledged, and the chair moves quickly to call for a motion, which led to a flawed decision that cut short the fact-finding process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Yes, Erica.
Sorry, before Hillary speaks, I just want to please ask the audience members to not speak while other people are speaking. It's incredibly rude and incredibly distracting, so please bring your discussions out in the lobby. Thank you.
An unwrapping of hard candies will be punished by death as well. Thank you very much for considering this important matter-
Please state your name.
-and for recognizing me. I'm Hillary Hedges Rayport, and I'm offering testimony to support the request that the decision be vacated, the decision of the HDC be vacated and remanded back to the HDC for reconsideration. I support the first category, which is there was improper process, in that the public hearing, the public hearing isn't open, it's not clear when it's closed, it's not clear who can offer testimony, and I think that those are things that we really need to tighten up so that we can have fair processes. The other category that you're considering is about arbitrary and capricious, and I'd like to speak directly to that, about why the decision was arbitrary and capricious. You've heard multiple times directly from Mr. Welch, and also in the record that's in front of you, about the powdery brick, and that the building could not be restored because the very material that it was being made of was falling apart. I find this to be arbitrary and not something that a reasonable person with reasonable information looking at the record would conclude. So the, there is visible evidence of powdery brick, and it's limited to a photograph of the southwest facade, image 4682, which is labeled in the image as normal weathering. So this does support that there's powdery brick, but it doesn't support the idea that all of the brick is powdery and that none of the brick can be reused. In fact, there's no evidence anywhere supporting that the brick is soft, that it's bad, that it's turning to powder, and that it can't be salvaged and repointed. In fact, National Grid's representative testified that they would leave the brick so that people on Nantucket could reuse the brick, and we can also see with our own eyes that the, there is solid brick. Moving to the Structures North report on page three, you can see in the report that the east elevation needs to be largely rebuilt. However, the north and south elevation, which are the gable ends, require much less reconstruction, and the light pink areas that are marked, those are areas that are to be shored up. Those aren't areas that are marked for full-depth reconstruction. So at no point in the report anywhere does Mr. Watney say that most of the brick is turning to powder, and nowhere does he say that the brick was fired at too low a temperature and cannot be used. There's no evidence from any analysis of any brick in any of the report, and yet, this idea that every brick was bad and that nothing could be saved was core to the decision of the most vocal members of the HDC voting to demolish the structure. When Mr. McLeod did question how to interpret the Structures North report, his question was answered by Mr. Reynolds. He said, "The color coding is a rough approximation of what brick would need to be replaced," but in his, Mr. Reynolds estimation, he said, "In reality, most of the building is going to need a full thickness replacement, because the mortar in between the outer weight and the inner weight is a powder, and you basically have to rebuild the whole wall." So he, he answered from his opinion. We didn't get an answer from Mr. Watney, so he basically overruled Mr. Watney's report. So I think when you look at the, when you get to the heart of the arbitrary and capricious argument, Mr. Pol said, quote, "After the Watney report was discussed, what I see here is a building that is falling apart because the brick it was made of was the wrong brick, the mortar was the wrong mortar." And he continued to say, "All of the original stuff that the building was made from would have to go." This really, it's not reflected in what you see. I think it was an arbitrary, arbitrary decision, and Mr. Pol was the commissioner who said, "If we get a second report, we have to listen to it." And yet, he's making findings that weren't in that report. So it's just not a practical or rational decision. I have one more comment about a capricious decision, and that's regarding Mr. Welch. So at the March meeting, he said he would only be able to permit the demolition if they were to work out some kind of mechanism in which they could recreate or rebuild, which they could have a replica. And he said, "That's the only way I could see this moving forward." That was in March. At the June meeting, he said, "To allow a demolition, there would need to be a replication on the site. This would need to be required." And he said he wanted a deed restriction on the property. But ultimately, in July, he concluded that the HDC can't encumber the property with a request for a particular building in advance, and you heard this discussed tonight, they can't encumber. What I think Mr. Welch is overlooking is that the property is encumbered, the property is currently encumbered by the historic building that is there. And by finding that the building, by, by not pursuing this idea of, give us a plan to reconstruct the building, show us how you would do it, show us the analysis of the brick, how many bricks are powdery, what percentage of the building has to be destroyed, none of that was discussed. So he was actually removing the encumbrance that he was seeking. So I do think that these, these aspects were arbitrary, they were capricious, the process was also bad, which other people spoke to, so I ask you to please vacate this decision of the HDC, remand it back, and when you do, ask for a properly noticed public hearing with an opening, a closing, so that people can really participate. Thank you very much.
I'll recognize you, but let's just try to not repeat things that are in the minutes and in the record and have already been said.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Glenn Bornazian, and I'm an architectural conservator and conservation contractor. I started my two companies, Integrated Conservation Resources and Integrated Conservation Contracting, in 1987, where we both design and build restoration and stabilization programs for historic buildings and monuments. We've had the opportunity to work here locally, nationally, and internationally as well. The restoration and stabilization of 10 New Whale Street is nothing unique, projects like this are done all the time. The first step in the process involves an in-depth assessment of the building's materials, conditions, definition of causes, of cause and effect relationships, prioritization of repairs, and designing treatment options that are both physically and aesthetically compatible with the historic construction materials. Only in this way can we determine potential approaches, possibilities, and estimated costs. A one-day visual assessment is not enough to develop a well-defined professional response or reach any viable conclusion. The structural engineer who specializes in historic structures, who was hired by National Grid to look at the building, John Watney from Structures North, in his words, carried out a one-day visual assessment on May 1st to write the report that he submitted on May 27th. In his report, he even gave, gives schematic options for the stabilization and repair of the existing conditions that he observed. In this way, he actually began outlining what might, what one might do if they wanted to restore or stabilize the building. In his conclusion, he states that, in his opinion, it would be extremely invasive, expensive, and impractical, and an impractical endeavor to try to rehabilitate this structure. Since he was hired to render an opinion on the structural condition of the building, the expense and the practicality of the work is not really for him to say, and responsible answers to his one-day observations need more in-depth study to develop clear, fact-based answers. Based on over 40 years of experience in this field and work on similar projects, I know this building can be restored successfully and in a way that meets many standards and guidelines. To begin the process, a qualified team of professionals-
Can I, we have to stick to what is in the record.
Okay.
And I do not dispute your qualifications, but we have to stick to speaking to the HDC's review, because we have, we can only make a decision on whether they were arbitrary and capricious in their process, or if there was a legal defect. And there are many ways that the whole process could be improved.
Right.
But we just, I am sure that there are many people who have a speech prepared, but we just, we'd need to-
Right. Just one last point.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, I think it's, it's hard to sit here and listen to people make decisions and having conversations about the quality of the, of the materials and the possibilities for the building, when I'm not sure the work, I don't know, I'm not sure, I know the work wasn't done to be able to make those decisions responsibly.
But they did hire experts, and they did have the preservation plan. There's just, there is a process that they use, and nothing is perfect in government. So let's just try to not repeat what people said and what's in the record.
My name is Christian Hoffman. I have a house at 42 Pine Street, I'm a, pardon me, Christian Hoffman. I have a house at 42 Pine Street, I'm an officer of the, of the Nantucket Preservation Trust. I want to simply address the due process question, not get into the merits, but really, what you, members of the select board should think about is, was due process followed here? Everybody knows in the ordinary course, if you want to come to a decision about something, you should hear both sides of the argument. What happened here is the, the argument for preservation was not allowed to be developed. Mr. Bornazian had submitted, without any request by the NPT, a letter at the, prior to the last hearing. And in that letter, he identified who he was, why he's an expert, and why the structure should be preserved. At the hearing, the, Mr. Reed and some members of the board basically refused to hear what he had to say. Now, if you're going to make a rational decision, you're going to have due process, you should pay attention to the opposing position, not simply the experts who have been paid by National Grid. Those are the two persons who they, they look to. They refuse to even ask Mr. Bornazian a question other than, why are you here? Who's paying you? Nothing substantive. So you've heard a little bit of the substance of Mr. Bornazian, but if you, if you want to seriously consider why this case should be remanded to the HDC, it's because he submitted a letter with information, they refused to ask him questions about it, they refused to consider it. In fact, Mr. Reed said, "It's not in the record."
However, they were in receipt of the letter.
Pardon me?
That was up to the board, it was a board decision. We cannot substitute a different process for what their process is, and they were, they did receive the information.
You have to, you have to- You have to, you have to consider whether they gave due process. It's just a different aspect of being arbitrary and capricious. If you refuse to listen-
Let me ask George Pucci to address that.
If you refuse to listen to the opposing side, you are engaged in irrationality. I would hope that the board wants the HDC to act fairly and to act rationally. Thank you.
May I just say, we did not receive that information.
Wait, let me get, take the point.
Please, excuse me. I call the point of information. I think it's a procedural matter. This has been introduced, I think if a hearing needs to be reviewed process, and I don't mean to be impertinent, it's this one. Having people come up and introduce new information contrary to your stated policy, and we are put in a position where we're forced to do rebuttal after rebuttal after rebuttal for new information. I just want to bring that up for the future. The point of information is that the HDC had the applicant hire a certified, I presume this is a society, Commissioner McLeod brought up this society, and NPT brought up this society, I don't have the name at the tip of my tongue that Attorney Reed referenced, who is a preservation-oriented professional association that has to do with restoration of masonry structures. We received that report. We read that report. It was clear. Engineers' reports, I don't know if you, you may not have familiarity with engineers' report, but many of the members of the board do, being involved in construction. It was very clear. It was very easy to understand. We didn't need the, when Angus asked his question about, "What does this mean?", that didn't mean that the rest of the board felt that they didn't understand it. So I just want to be clear on that point. I want to be clear on the point that we received the opposing sides, if you want to put it that way, argument in an engineer's report, and it wasn't a matter of whether the engineer wanted one outcome or another. He was reporting on what he saw under his license. And what he saw provided us the compelling evidence that we needed, not wanted to make. I would love for that structure to still be there. We all would, you know, going forward. But the engineer, through the Preservation Society's certified group, provided compelling evidence that the structure was not restorable. Lastly, I just, this idea that was introduced, the HDC decision, hearing process, our Enabling Act does not call for a public hearing such as the zoning board, the planning board, or even you guys. We have, I remember when I first came down here and started, we went to meetings, and you didn't get to talk. They reviewed the drawings and made a determination. That's how the Enabling Act is written. There isn't a public hearing process. Lastly, the public hearing process that is called for in the guidelines is for a protected structure. This was never determined to be a protected structure. By virtue, again, by virtue of the fact that the HDC determined that it could be demolished, it was de facto determined not to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Bergman. I would just like to make a point of clarification. It's been mentioned a few times that NPT was consulted or recommended, the hiring of Structures North, Structures, I respect Structures North, but we were not, we had, NPT did not say, "Go to Preservation Massachusetts," that's the group, and choose from their list. The Preservation Massachusetts list is a list that you pay to be on. That is the only qualification of being on that list. I am having issues with the circular argument of, "The structure is not protected because we never said it was protected because we didn't have a hearing, because we don't have to have a hearing." How are we going to protect the island if we are not going to listen to the preservation planner? And we're not going to, anyway.
Madam Chair? Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second to that?
I think we've heard everything.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I had one other.
You can't, well, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, I will draw my motion then if there's no second.
I'm just trying to figure out how the board wants to handle this. I mean, it's 8:30 at night. We could continue this public hearing. We could continue to take testimony. We could limit testimony to a certain time limit. We could go back to ask George Pucci questions, but our options. Matt?
I'm having flashbacks to 106 Main Street back in the day, and I was on the board. And it was a building that was unable to be saved and had, was unsafe, and people couldn't walk by. And when it was torn down, it was, they were lifting the, the things that were knocking the building down was lifting the truck right off the ground. And the facade of it is on the front of my wife's shop now. And so I'm having flashbacks. I'm hearing the same thing. And the problem with these, with demolition is when it's gone, it's completely gone. There's no, there's no option. So I would like this board to, to err on the side of caution and to remand it and have a full, robust public hearing to ensure that, you know, that this, those things, that both sides have been heard and that, and I look in a, you know, rebuilding this, I'm looking at the pictures, you'd lose all, and I, we're not supposed to talk about this, you'd lose all the things that are important, you know, a rebuilt building. And so I just think, yeah, and there's, there are other, there's lots of, you know, so I feel, I find that there was, I'm not clear that it was a public hearing. I'm not clear that people felt that-
They don't have the same public hearing process that we do.
No, I understand, but I, I just, I, I won't, I would like to, I would like to remand it, and I would like to err on the side of caution. And if it comes back after that, that's fine. So that's one person's opinion.
I'm struggling to comprehend what parts of what we're hearing are actually things we should be considering versus not, right? That it's, these things get so muddied that, and I don't know, I don't know whether Town Council can help me understand how to parse out. Let me ask a specific question. Is the HDC obligated to, quote unquote, hear the other side?
In my opinion, you could, you could find that relevant if you, if, if you, if you find that there was evidence before them that they failed to consider, and you find that evidence compelling, in my opinion, that would be grounds for you to send it back. But I'm not saying that that should be your determination. I just want to make that clear.
No, no.
I'm just saying, in my opinion, if, if you find that there was relevant evidence before them that they either refused or failed to consider, that would be grounds for affirming the appeal and sending it back.
Okay.
And, and, yeah. And I did want to interject too, Brooke and Dawn, you know, in terms of being troubled or confused about how much information you can take in at this hearing, you know, that's a policy that you set before, that you're limited to the record before the commission. I would point out, in the event of appeal to Superior Court, the court is not limited to the record that was before the commission. And so the court would and does take new evidence, any evidence that comes in, depending on the judge that hears the case, they can, you know, take in all new evidence and testimony at trial, and they can do a view and all kinds of things. So the legislation is specific on that, the appeals to court or de novo review, which means any evidence can come in for or against a decision. The enabling legislation, though, is not so specific with regard to the appeal before your board. You have enacted a policy that you published that you tend to, you want to hear only evidence that was in the record before the commission when you decide whether or not to grant or deny an appeal. I would point out further, though, that really nothing that was, that you heard tonight was not part of this record. I mean, the packet was pretty clear that the gentleman that just got up to speak about his expert findings, he had an expert report that was in the record. There are public statements by commission members that are, you know, part of the public record. So really, you've, you've heard nothing new tonight before you, just comments for or against the appeal. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out to the board. If you're troubled that you heard too much or too little, you didn't. You heard basically what was in the record before the commission.
Okay, that's really helpful. May I ask the HDC a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I'd like, I'd like to be reminded of the history of Mr. Bornazian's outreach to the HDC on this in terms of the timing when it was received. And was it considered?
Through you, Madam Chair. Brooke, I can't remember sometimes what I had for lunch, so timeline, I can't really give you, and I mean no disrespect on that. But whether it was considered, we all received the information. The members who voted in to approve the demolition are members who exercise extreme diligence. I think you all know me and my record of diligence. Val Oliver will, you will not find a meeting of the Historic District Commission where Val Oliver doesn't turn to one of her members, one of the members, and gently chide them for not having previewed the information. And of course, our prior chair and vice chair, currently Ray Poll, is both diligent and a professional in the sense that he is an architect. And he, like I, actually walked through the building. I don't know if he held crumbling brick in his hand, but I did. I don't know if that answers your question. I hope it does.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You think Kathy Flynn could shed some light on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you too, I guess, everyone. Excuse me, since I am the records keeper, the official records keeper for the HDC, the letter from Mr. Bornazian was sent the day before the July 8th meeting, which is July 7th. We have a deadline for submissions for old business and new business, and it was well past that. So to answer your question, that's why.
Do you want to continue to, to win?
If I could just make one, one comment. My name's been mentioned a few times, so I'm, I guess I'm speaking as a, as a member of the public.
For the public, you've got to tell, tell me your name, please.
Angus McLeod.
Thanks.
So I am an HDC member, but, yeah, my, my questions weren't answered because there wasn't representation from the second engineer who was hired. And the, the association that they came from, Preservation Massachusetts, was a recommendation from Holothek Preservation Planner. But in that report, anyone who's read it, it goes from Structures North, it goes through every part of the building, talking about how it would be stabilized and, and restored. And so in no part of that whole report, my takeaway, does it say this building cannot be restored. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Do we want to keep, there are some hands up online. Yeah, I'll take charity bounds.
Thank you. My only experience with this is that my mother was involved with the restoration of Williamsburg. And in the reconstruction of many of those buildings, they were addressed through a period of time, from early times through the 1800s, and-
Can we just try and, can we please try and keep things specific?
Yes, I will. And I think, but I think it is arbitrary and capricious to fail to do the necessary research to establish whether or not a building is significant and should be restored. I'd also like to point out, that building has been used in the last few years under the authority of whatever agency approves it for parking cars, and the attendants have been living-
Charity, that's not, that's, that's a different building. That's a different building. Sorry. Are you-
Abby Camp, I'm on the HDC.
How are you speaking because you voted in the minority?
As a public citizen.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to ask the select board to remand the demolition of 10, to New Whale Lane and bring it back to the HDC for further review. At the end of the last meeting, a preservationist gave us enlightening information that could hopefully save the building. Yes, it is in need of serious structural work and would no doubt be costly.
Abby, I think this would constitute a minority report, which I don't think has been authorized by your board, as was stated at the beginning. I mean, talking about you voting not in favor concerns me. He was just click, this is just going a little, this is getting a little bit too far-
Okay.
-in, in the process. And I, I understand, but you're specifically asking us to remand a decision where you weren't on the prevailing side.
Oh, thank you.
There's two more hands up online. Do you want me to take the last two? And we'll be done. And then we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Robert Little?
Thank you, Dawn. It's a complex subject. I support the HDC's diligence and decision. Wow. Bigger than we imagined. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thanks. Marissa Pizzi, one more brief comment.
I just want to address a couple of the comments that have been made. As far as the Structures North report, the second report that we were required to obtain, that was at Mr. McLeod who just spoke. That was at his request and insistence that we, we retain an expert from the Preservation Massachusetts list. It was on his motion that we were required to do that. And he, obviously being one of the dissenting members at that time, so when we talk about hearing from the other side, I'm not sure what that refers to, but we did do that at our expense and not at our own initiation. As far as Mr. Bornazian, that letter was submitted, as was noted, the day before. There's been a lot of reference to his letter being an expert opinion. He does not fit, as I understand, the qualifications that Mr. McLeod himself set for us to obtain an opinion. He's not been qualified as an expert. He is, as far as I know, not been, his report was not commissioned by anyone that was a party to that proceeding. Don't believe he's a Nantucket resident or has a resident or has a business in Nantucket. So I'm not sure to what extent his, what we're now calling expert report would even be valid or permissible for consideration. And lastly, I would just point out, because it also was stated incorrectly, that there is a section in the Structures North report, which I would refer the board to, page four specifically, in which Mr. Watney states, quote, "Unfortunately, given the relative hardness of the existing mortar, cleaning and reusing the brick, existing brick on the repairs would be difficult since the bricks would tend to shatter during removal. Therefore, reusing existing brick in repairs would likely not be feasible, and new matching replacement brick would be required." He then goes on to state how virtually none of the original fabric of the building would remain. So I just wanted to clarify those statements because I think what was previously stated was inaccurate, and I appreciate the board's opportunity to speak again. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have questions?
Madam Chair, I'll just make a comment or two. It's late, this is a tough one, and there's a lot of different definitions of what the standards are for both boards, but for us, the standards are arbitrary and capricious. And the, you know, maybe I or whoever could sit here and say, "Well, maybe the HDC didn't reach the correct decision or the decision that we, we all collectively want." But after thinking about our previous decisions in these cases and, and being advised by Town Council, arbitrary, arbitrary really means like wildly different than other decisions that the HDC has made. And the HDC has latitude to either overrule the preservation planner or to, to talk about their, the definition of what impractical is. That, that's not what our, that's not what our remit is. And I have a lot, I can't, on our standard, I can't, I can't supplement my own judgment for the HDC's on that, right, wrong, or indifferent. So, and capricious would be wildly something else, like an open meat law violation, or they discussed something that was not agendaed, or they didn't have a quorum or something like that. Those are very specific. So I, I hear everybody, and I would, I wouldn't mind sending this back, but under-
Sorry.
Under our own standard for our drawing capricious, I don't see, unfortunately, I don't see that this meets that bar, but I am open to anybody on the board here to, to add something new.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I agree with my colleague. I have a lot of trouble, I always have, with this board or other board of interfering with their independence. And being on boards, being on boards, often we maybe not do everything perfectly, but at least this group studied it, they had hearings, and a lot of my friends out there are probably gonna not speak to me for a week or two, but I don't think the standard has been met to send this back. I could go on, but that's how I feel.
You guys know how I feel.
Yeah, I, this is a difficult one, I gotta say, but I do think the standard to which we have held ourselves historically and that I believe we hold ourselves to has not been met. They solicited engineering reports, they reviewed engineering reports, that, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to deny the appeal. And uphold the decision of the HDC.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Are there any further comments that anyone wants to make?
I mean, I see where it's going. My comments were not in, you know, I'm not, I'm not being critical of the, I'm trying not to be critical of the HDC. I think they do, it's a hard job, and it's a, you know, just like we have sometimes, it's not, they're in a tough position, but I also think that I've been at this long enough and been told that, "Oh, this won't happen again, we're gonna do this and this, and we're gonna put these other things in place, and don't worry." And I've been at it long enough, and they're so busy, I don't blame them, we don't ever get to that. And I don't, and I think some of the circular arguments that were made were, you know, were, you know, arbitrary. You know, I think some, I think how this was handled was arbitrary, I think that, so for various reasons, I think we could, you know, Mr. Pucci's told us, we could find for that, those reasons. And, you know, and we're not choosing to do that, and that's fine. So I'm against.
Okay, I'll vote of a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will oppose.
Okay.
Sorry, you said you opposed?
Yes.
You seconded, okay.
I know, it's-
Okay. And Matt's opposed, so it's up to me, and I'm gonna uphold the HDC because I believe that they work really hard, and they followed a process. Nothing's perfect, I can't substitute my own judgment. It's a tough one.
It's a really tough one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Erica, that was-
Motion by everybody, seconded by everybody.